Good evening and welcome to our regular meeting of our City Council for April the 22nd, 2025. Before we start our invocation, just a brief update on Mayor Connors. He had a back operation on Monday. He's doing well, and he is going to try to come to our Thursday meeting, which I advised him against, but he's bound and determined. So I'm picking him up and bringing him to the meeting. I'll be driving Miss Daisy. So our invocation tonight will be given by our Fire Department Chaplain, Chaplain Breann Robinson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to open with just a couple scripture verses. It says, "How joyful are those who fear the Lord and their delight in obeying his commands." And this is a great thing, especially with the presentation earlier from the police, that their children will be successful everywhere and an entire generation of godly people will be blessed. We can bow our heads in prayer. Father, I just thank you so much that you are a God of family. I thank you so much that you love to bless your people and your children. I just pray for healing over our mayor. May he recover quickly. May the hands of the doctors, may their work be successful in repairing any damage that was needing to be fixed and that he will be back in good health in a few days. Father, I thank you for each member of this council, for the time they give. Give them wisdom, give them discernment, and for every citizen that is here trying to represent and speak their concerns. Father, thank you for this community, and we just thank you for the way that you orchestrate order and that you are present in our midst. In your name, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any special recognitions because we covered them all at our 5:30 meeting, and now we'll move on to Boards and Commissions, which the Student Advisory Council annual report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Per Resolution Number 5-2023, the Student Advisory Council must annually provide a report to City Council during April that discusses issues and which presents solutions. The Student Advisory Council will also provide recommendations to their 2025-26 successors.
The 2024 and 2025 Student Advisory Council expresses its appreciation to Mayor Andrew Connor, Vice Mayor Herman Cole, Junior Colonel, United States Air Force Retired, and Council Members Megan Moscoso, Jolynn Nelson, and Dr. Sarah Stokel for their continued support and encouragement. We also express our appreciation to the previous City Manager Scott Larisse, the interim City Manager Tom Abate, Astronaut High School Advisor Morgan Smith, Academic Community Enrichment Advisor Rebecca Moon, Titusville High School Advisor Kathleen Rios, City Staff Liaison Emily Campbell, and other city staff that provided our council with guidance in its decision-making process. The 2024-2025 Student Advisory Council members include, from Astronaut High School, Co-Chair Callie Serrato, Member Peyton Redfern, Vice Chair Sidney Lely, and Member Luke Donhoff. From the Academic Community Enrichment, Co-Chair Julia Moon, Member Kayden Ramos, Secretary Christina Sims, and Member Alexis Peer. Finally, from Titusville High School, Co-Chair Victoria Hillary, Member Kayden Feibig, Member Grace Barazza, and Member Ava Spur. In accordance with Resolution Number 5, 2023, the Student Advisory Council is to discuss, research, and prioritize two to four concerns or issues to be presented annually to City Council with proposed solutions for further discussion or action. The mission of the Student Advisory Council is to encourage involvement of young people in the community affairs and create an awareness of their rights and responsibilities as citizens of Titusville, Florida. This year, the council held 10 regular meetings and one special meeting. During 2024 and 2025, our council undertook the planning of the following projects for the following term: hosted a beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach on January 12th, 2025 with Canaveral National Seashore, and hosted the Mock City Council on April 1st, 2025. Thank you. Hello, I'm Julia Moon. I'm presenting for our beach cleanup. In January, the Student Advisory Council held a beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach on January 12th, 2025. The event was to develop, motivate, educate, and activate our community to reduce litter, recycle, beautify, and sustain the environment and for the benefit of Titusville. The council advertised the cleanup to each of its respective schools to gather outside volunteers to help. The Canaveral National Seashore had some difficulty setting a date, and due to some last-minute changes, this event was poorly attended. We have asked the ranger in charge, Havis Cogan, how to better this event, and he gave useful feedback. Much appreciation to him and to all who attended and the Canaveral National Seashore. Thank you.
My name is Callie Serrato. I'll be presenting the Mock City Council. The Titusville Student Advisory Council is proud to announce the successful completion of its biannual Mock City Council, held on April 1st, 2025. This longstanding initiative is designed to educate local high school students about the inner workings of municipal government, foster civic engagement, and provide a platform for student voices on community-related issues. This semester's Mock City Council was held in the Titusville City Hall, Council Chambers, where students assumed the roles of city officials, including mayor, council members, city attorney, city manager, and department representatives. The session was conducted in adherence to the formal procedures of the City Council meeting, including a public comment section, presentation of proposed ordinances, and structured debate. Students from Titusville area high schools have participated in this session. The elegance demonstrated professionalism, critical thinking, and teamwork throughout the mock proceedings. In preparation, students attended a weekly planning meetings, engaged in policy research, and participated in workshops on parliamentary procedure and public speaking. Feedback conducted through post-event surveys reflected a strong sense of empowerment and increased understanding of local governance among participants. Many expressed interest in future involvement in civic leadership and community service. The Student Advisory Council extends its sincere gratitude to the City of Titusville for their continued support and collaboration on this event. Thank you to our schools promoting student engagement and allowing participants time to contribute in this enriching activity.
The Student Advisory Council expresses its gratitude towards the City Council, the City of Titusville, and all its employees. We cannot continue our service without your unwavering support. The Student Advisory Council voted earlier this spring on the goals we wanted next year's council to work towards. The council will be holding our biannual youth leadership seminar in the spring of 2026 with professional guest speakers and workshop activities for local high school students to learn the important quality of leadership. The council also plans on hosting clothes drive, and lastly, will begin working on a volunteering project with elementary school students. As prescribed by City of Titusville Resolution Number 5-2023, the Student Advisory Council must discuss and prioritize two to four concerns or issues each year. For this reason, this year's Student Advisory Council suggests the following goals be forwarded to the 2025-2026 Student Advisory Council for their consideration and implementation. We wish to host a youth leadership seminar in spring of 2026, host a clothes drive, and a volunteer project with elementary school students. Once again, we wish to thank everyone for their support during the 2024-2025 term. We wish next year's council much success. Thank you.
I must say that I attended the Mock City Council meeting, and I was wondering if you guys could just come up and take over because it only lasted a half hour, which is a little different than the council meetings we have. Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies. Now we'll move on to the 2025-202... No, the Student Advisory Council scholarships, which I think I'm supposed to do this?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cole will present scholarships to three seniors: Victoria Hillary of Titusville High School, Julia Moon of the Academic Community Enrichment Incorporated, and Callie Serrato of Astronaut High School, who have participated on the Student Advisory Council.
I'm trying to read it. I don't have my glasses on.
And this is obviously you.
Can I take a picture?
We are right there.
Yes. That's normal. One, two, three. You get to take a picture. Get in there. Yes. Sorry.
Just while we have the seniors here, I was planning to make this announcement during my report, but I did want to let you guys know that I'm involved with the Florida League of Cities and Space Coast League of Cities, and they have two scholarship opportunities going on right now. The Florida League of Cities, it is a quick turnaround time, and they want you to be enrolled in college this summer, and that deadline's May 1st. Space Coast League of Cities will be a much smaller pool, and I highly suggest you apply for that. That deadline will be May 16th. So if you are interested in that, please let Emily know, and I will get her information so you guys can apply. But I will tell you, I've been a part of this organization for a while. It's just for Brevard, Space Coast area, so the pool is very small, so you have a good shot at potentially getting another scholarship. So I would encourage you guys to apply.
Okay, moving on to the 2025-2026 Student Advisory Council membership appointments.
Per Resolution Number 5-2023, the Titusville Student Advisory Council is comprised as follows: four students appointed from Astronaut High School, four from Titusville High School, and four from the Academic Community Enrichment Association. It is recommended that the proposed slate of students be confirmed and appointed to the 2025-2026 Student Advisory Council, as selected and appointed by their respective schools, and in accordance with Resolution Number 5-2023, as follows: from Astronaut High School, 12th grade Peyton Redfern, 11th grade Sidney Lely, 10th grade Luke Donhoff, and the 9th grade appointment is pending. From Titusville High School, 12th grade Kayden Feibig, 11th grade Grace Barazza, 10th grade Ava Spear, and the 9th grade appointment is pending. And from the Academic Community Enrichment Association, 12th grade Kayden Ramos, 11th grade Krista Sims, 10th grade Alexis Peer, and 9th grade is pending.
So we need a motion to...
Confirm the proposed slate of students.
Right.
Move to confirm the proposed slate of students as members of the 25-26 Student Advisory Council.
Second.
We have a motion by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Stokel. Are you ready for questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposes? So moved. Thank you. Now we'll have petitions and requests from the public present on non-agenda items. Just one second so everybody can say goodbye.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay.
Dana White.
Okay, all right, yes. And there's something on the back, too. My name is Stan Johnson. I've sent three letters to Wanda and the person who... I think you were here for the last meeting, too, right? The one is on sustainability, one is on Mr. Broome, over here, our attorney, and the other one is on sewage spill. So the fraud has to do with some people, $70,000 fraud that's against me for a report that doesn't exist that was supported by Mr. Broome and other people. So the subject, I'll read the subject of this letter. It says, "This is to Mr. Broome and City Council. Request for council to refuse your resignation," he's resigned, "and to terminate you and void your pension for your participation in the $70,000 fraud as per ORB 8506, page 137, and many other causes." Many other causes, there's a paragraph here that lists about six other things what she was involved with are dishonesty, secrecy, and lies. And this is submitted for his review and comment, so he can comment on this. So I'll read a little bit of this, and I'm saying that I'm doing you a favor, Mr. Broome, that's what I believe it is, because exposing your dishonesty, depravity, and betrayal in many regards, perhaps you will grow up and seek repentance, forgiveness, and a second chance to follow the straight and narrow path traveled by your dad, and to my knowledge, your dad, and my father. Perhaps within two years, you will read this email and thank me. So what this has to do with is, I have... My dad and his dad were very good friends, and I had made a personal oath to myself that I was going to watch after him because of the relationship that my parents had and our families had. But this was betrayal. He betrayed us. He betrayed us. Show that sign again. This is the fraud that he's involved in, participated in, and I think it's a dirty thing that he's did, very dirty. And he's betrayed, and only he's betrayed me, my profession, his profession, please, profession and everything, is that he's betrayed... I wrote in here, he's betrayed our dear Lord faith that we had at Park Avenue Baptist Church. It's a horrible betrayal that I'm expressing this letter, so if you don't have it, you can get it from the city. It's dated April the 21st. So thank you, and I wish you guys well. This fraud is dirty tricks that council has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have anyone else for petitions and requests? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Lerue Fleming. My address is 1735 Lakeside Drive. I believe all those in this room who have booked a short-term rental for less than three months have done so for one of two reasons: availability or cost. I'm a Christian, and I obey the law. I operate a short-term rental that I've owned for 22 years in Titusville, which helps to supplement my retirement. I received an email from Airbnb mentioning my need to comply with State and County Department of Revenue to get a license. While ignorance is not a proper defense, this was news to me. Having said that, I immediately came to City Hall to determine what I needed to do. A search was done of my address to see if it was zoned for short-term rentals. I was told it was not. It turns out, no districts are allowed to do short-term rentals less than three months in Titusville, which the clerk knew before she did the research. In effect, you have robbed me of the ability to rent my own house for less than three months. What is the difference between someone renting a home for one month or three months, getting even three three-month renters, as this ordinance allows for four, is next to impossible. By this, you will take thousands of dollars out of my pocket, most of which I would spend in this town. On Airbnb, both the host and the guests are required to leave a review. I have never gotten less than a five-star review and have had no guests that have not been respectful of my property. My house is the best kept in the neighborhood. I gave up long-term renting because renters kept trashing my house, in effect hurting the neighborhood. If a family of four booked the courtyard with two queen beds and one room, they would pay, with taxes, $1,925 for a six-day stay this week. If the same family booked my clean three-bedroom, two-bath home, they would pay $1,062. Which would you choose? I have had traveling nurses, physical therapists, NASA interns, remote workers, and people coming to bury their veterans at the National Cemetery in Scottsmore. I have had no issues with any of these. Both the states since 2011 and the county of Brevard allow these endeavors with a license. Why doesn't Titusville? According to the internet, Orlando has 11,025 short-term rental units. Disney visitors do not stay three months. Respectfully, shutting down short-term rental properties is a fiscally poor choice for Titusville. Tourism tax dollars would be greatly lessened if people have to stay in other towns because we have no room at the end. I have read the ordinance 46-2007. I would ask that you remove it from the land development regulations or remove the three-month minimum stay requirement for the same, however that is affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Laura. My permanent residency is actually in the country of Ecuador, so I don't really have an official address here. Thank you for your time today and for allowing me to speak. It saddens me to be here today after losing our business to government rules and regulations that exist without considering the impact they have on small businesses. So when our host asked me if I would help, I didn't hesitate. We stay at this Airbnb because of their attention to detail and assurance that we have all the comforts of home. Hotels or motels don't offer the same services such as a full kitchen, multiple bedrooms we can use as our offices, since my husband and I both work online, a private outdoor space, and a grilled barbecue brats and burgers. This host even included a darling Easter basket to welcome us to the neighborhood this visit. Their house is our home away from home and is by far the best we have ever stayed in, and we have traveled all over the world using Airbnb. We also love the area and enjoy supporting the small businesses in the area. I have bank statements from each time we have visited showing the amount of money we put into Titusville's economy. From September to October of 2021, we spent $1,700. From September to November of 2022, we spent $4,600. And these amounts are from bank statements. This does not include cash. I wonder if those small businesses we support would be upset to hear that we may not be able to stay at this Airbnb anymore. We support businesses like family-owned diners, local ice cream shops, small neighborhood boutiques, mom-and-pop hair and nail salons, and non-chain restaurants. We've been here since Saturday morning, 72 hours. We've already spent $600 in Titusville alone. Priorities need to be reevaluated. How is an Airbnb who has guests for less than three months hurting or affecting anyone in the city besides adding money to the economy? Why is the city micromanaging the zoning laws of small businesses like this instead of supporting and working with them while figuring out a solution that benefits everyone? We live in Ecuador for six months out of each year where zoning laws do not exist. A dance club can be placed next door to your house, and you have zero say. So I understand and respect zoning laws here. However, this property is not allowed dance club. It's a quiet respectable Airbnb where guests are vetted very carefully. I know they are, since this host in particular commented on the lovely referrals written about me by other Airbnb hosts. If this Airbnb is limited to three-month stays, our financial support in the city will also go away. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Davis. I'm a member of the Concerned Citizens Community Group here in Titusville. I live at 3740 Hickory Place Drive here in Titusville. And I think this was discussed at a previous meeting. I just wanted to bring this up to the attention of the city in regards to a plan to develop a DeLeon Trail design, which is going to be a shared-use path that runs the length pretty much of DeLeon Avenue. And the concern that I have, and I'm sure others do too, is that we need to have more input from the community about the impact that would have.
I don't want to interrupt you, Kirk, but we discussed this at the last meeting, and the decision, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, the decision was, we put that aside, and we said we would use the money and get citizens' input to do something that the neighbors wanted.
That's why I'm bringing it up again.
Okay.
Because there's been no set time or location for such meeting. And I just wanted to bring up another thing I saw here, doing my scan of this engineering development plan here. On October 20th, 2023, that's when it was dated, and this is the first time I've heard of it, the early part of this month, about this at all. I know that the city has other plans in place to extend bike paths and such through all over the city of Titusville, but this particular location, we just haven't, we've been in the dark, and that's why I wanted to bring to the attention of the city. We need to, you know, what money is to be set aside. We need to go ahead and act on that, get this out, and get the input, because I don't know what the time limit is on this. I got the understanding that it was drawing near to that, and we haven't had any input from the community. So I just want to bring that to the attention of the city.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Yeah, thank you, Kirk.
Oh, thank you.
Just understand that we deferred that, and the money was going back into coffers so that we could get citizens' input to determine what would best be in that neighborhood, best for that neighborhood.
Understood. I just didn't hear or see any planning ahead as far as setting up that, those sessions. And that's where my concern lies.
We're in the process of working that now.
Okay.
Okay?
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Transparency is needed in the city of Titusville today. Transparency can start by getting rid of these stupid lawsuits against the public. Transparency can start by getting rid of these stupid lawsuits against the public. Transparency would be hiring a new police chief. Whoever invited Stan Retsch, Jeff Davis, and a few others to a meeting a few weeks ago, which seemed like a comedy show, it was all set up. All those people wouldn't have known to come in that particular day to say what was said. John Lau retired in 2017. That was a best-kept secret from the public and this city council by the former city manager, Scott Larisse, which gave him a sweet annual contract deal that most of you probably don't even know what, what it's all about. That's not transparency. The people elect you to run the city, but it seems like Scott Larisse and the chief's been running the city. I talked to Sarah Stoker back in, at Moore Park. She had no idea that the chief had retired. And that was about four years after he retired. Now you have the opportunity to hire a new city manager, and you need to be hiring a new chief. It gives you the opportunity to start fresh, and you guys get behind what's going on because the public elect you. So hired people should not be informing you of what they want to do. You're supposed to let them know what, what, what you and the citizens want.
Thank you, Mr. Sigler.
Reverend J.B. Dennis, President of the National Action Network Cocoa Florida Chapter. The city of Titusville has got a reputation as being a KKK stronghold. I've been up here four times for back-shooting cops. I led them watching the James Lowry case. I was up here when they beat up Amari Hill in handcuffs. It's no big secret, Chief Lau should have been gone 15 years ago. I've been up here four times under his leadership for violating the civil rights of the citizens. The city of Titusville needs to get a police chief from another city. As a National Action Network, we got it done in Sanford. As a National Action Network president, we got it done in Cocoa. We got a new police chief, we got a new city manager. Titusville needs to get a city manager from somewhere else because the corruption, it goes on and on and on, and these voters and citizens are sick of it. I don't got tired of coming up here under Chief Lau, watching black people only being shot in the back. We need a police chief that's going to write paruses that are fair and impartial to all members of this community. And I want to ask you women a question up there. I know Nazis and white supremacists have no conscience, but I want to ask you leaders up there, how would you feel if a back-shooting cop shot one of your kids in the back and you didn't see the video for almost three months? Think about it. The video need to be released of the Charles back-shooter today. The mayor of this city needs to resign. If Chief Lau got something on it, fire Chief Lau and resign. That killed two birds with one stone. It done got old now. It done got old. Something needs to change. And we tried our best to get the feds in here, but we didn't talk to FDLE. If you done been in here when the Titusville police was taking drugs and having urgent motels, you locked them up on that. You locked up the last one that shot our James Lowry in the back. And this state attorney, I'm praying that he locked this other back shooter that shoot people through the windshield trash from Cocoa that y'all hired up here on the Chief Lau. It done got old. It's time for change.
Christina, I do not feel comfortable revealing my address, but I do have a question. And Chief Lau, you're here, you're present. The question is for you. Do you or do you not have authority to release the body cam footage?
Excuse me, you need to, if you're going to speak, you need to be facing the council. Answer the question.
Just answer the question.
Tramari Charles, do you or do you not have authority to release body cam footage?
Let me answer the question. I've answered this question on numerous occasions. I answered it at the NAACP meeting we had right after the shooting. And I said that the purpose of the FDLE coming in because we don't investigate ourselves. So consequently, it has to, can I have order, please? The purpose of the FDLE coming in is so that we don't investigate ourselves. The investigation has taken an inordinate amount of time. Chief Lau spoke with Ms. Charles on yesterday and assured her that she would be the first one to see, and we are hoping, we, we have no control.
Okay, that's great. I have another question.
Turn and face the council or either sit down. I'm serious.
Are you aware of your citizens being harassed, Chief Lau? Are you aware? You're laughing.
I told you that you needed to turn around and face the council, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, last time I was here, I was talking about the different stages of grief, denial, anger, bargaining. Acceptance is coming to terms with loss, finding ways to move forward, displayed in city, actually, it doesn't even rhyme, depression, sadness, emptiness. What stage do y'all think Samantha Charles is in? What stage do you think the community is in?
Thank you. I mentioned earlier that it's not up to us to release it. The FDLE has to do a full investigation to make sure who the culpable person is, if there is someone culpable. Until that's released, we can't make a statement. Our hands are tied.
Okay, so what about the history?
I'm only answering you. Your three minutes are up. You may take your seat. Thank you.
It's very interesting that we have limits, but they don't.
Thank you.
Any other petitions and requests?
Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. I just want to point out that I did study the scope and everything of the company you hired to look for the new city manager, and I pointed out there were eight places for citizen input. Nobody's asked me a single thing about it yet, and I realize I'm not an important citizen in this town. However, I would like to point out that there are opportunities for citizen input into the selection, the criteria that you're looking for, and, and the management skills, the identification of the management skills and styles that are appropriate, and to help assess the different candidates. You guys can do the reference and background checks, but then I would think that there would, you'd want to have some citizen input more than at that last-day party after you've interviewed and narrowed it down. I read about that. You know, there's a party, there's a social party, and I certainly expect an invitation to that. But I would like to see the citizens to have input into the selection of our next city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I forget, I don't know of any rule that said...
Name and address, please.
Sure. Ray Joseph Gardendale, 32796. I'm not aware of any rule that everybody has to face north to talk.
Well, you are now.
Okay, is that in writing? Where could I look at it and find it, just out of curiosity?
The purpose of individuals coming up is to talk to city council. So if you're going to talk to city council, you need to face city council when you're talking to them.
Okay, but can you tell me where in writing that rule is? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it has to do with our form of government. It's a council manager form of government, which means us as council, we get elected, we work part-time, and our job is to hire city manager who then oversees the staff. So as citizens, you give us feedback, ideas, direction, then we, the staff does not report...
I'm sorry, I only got three minutes, so...
They can pause it, but I just wanted, you asked a question I was trying to explain for you.
Can you tell me, like, what section?
It's the form of government. If you look up city manager council form of government, that's where the staff, they report to the city manager who reports to us. So they do not do it unless we give them direction to do so. So that's how it works. And so when the mayor's saying that, it means you need to direct your questions to us, and then we have the authority to then act on that as we see fit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other cities in Florida have codes that regulate the placement or returning of trash containers behind a front setback of a dwelling or the primary building, especially in residential neighborhoods. The placement of periodicals and business cards on residential property is another ongoing issue here, also which other municipalities in Florida have codes regulating placement and timely removal. I've spoken about this repeatedly and how it attributes to quality of life, and many of you use the same wording, quality of life. All of this behavior is also blight-related, which has an impact on neighborhood decline and property values. We have heard of the salaries and salary demands of potential new hire personnel, and this is so widespread, it could be a source of revenue. I need to learn of your advisability of matching these codes as in other cities. And it goes without saying...
I'm going to give you another 30 seconds because of the conversation that we had back and forth.
How about a minute?
30 seconds.
I think I need at least a minute. It goes without saying, and after 10 previous meetings, I'm still a victim of the noise nuisance disturbance from the excessively loud F-150 white pickup truck in Gardendale. This is detrimental to my health and welfare. I've said it before, I'll say it again. Do you have to be related to someone to get justice in Titusville? I've said it before, I'll say it again. You have some third-world policies. I've been around the world, you have some third-world policies.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for petitions and requests, please? Seeing none, we'll move the agenda to the consent agenda. City manager?
Yes, sir. We have consent agenda items A through I. The council wish to pull any consent items from the agenda.
I see none.
Therefore, I'll go ahead and I'll read the items for the record. 8A, Resolution Number 8-2025, commending outstanding students from North Brevard Area Schools. Approved Resolution Number 8-2025, commending outstanding students from North, from North Brevard Area Schools for 2024, 2025. 8B, Grant Agreement, St. John's Basin Feasibility Study. Approved the grant agreement between the City of Titusville and the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $500,000 in funding for the feasibility study and preliminary engineering design report for nature-based improvements and mitigation strategies for the St. John's Stormwater Basin. 8C, Resolution Number 9-2025, Landscape Trust Fund. Adopt Resolution Number 9-2025, reallocating funds from the Landscape Enhancement Program in the amount of $50,000 toward the required match for the urban and community forestry grant with the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and allocate $15,000 into the City of Titusville Landscape Trust Fund. 8D, Florida Division of Historic Resources Small Matching Grant. Approved the request to submit a grant application in the amount of $50,000 to the Florida Division of Historical Resources to update the city's history webpage and explore historic Titusville mobile application through the integration of a walking tour and implement Historic Interpretive Sign program. 8E, Purchase of Lund University Cardio Pulmonary Assist System CPR Device and associated budget transfer for the Fire Department. Authorize the purchase of One Lucas Chest Compression System and associated budget amendments for a total of $20,438. 8F, Use of $400,000 to fund special investigations. Approved the use of $10,000 in $400,000 to fund ongoing special investigations. 8G, Hot Car Thermometer and Associated Budget Amendment Transfer for Fire Department. Authorize the purchase of Fire Department Never Leave Your Child Alone tripod hot car thermometer from Innovative Concepts LLC for a total amount not to exceed $2,375. 8H, Wheel and Cloud Platform Master Service Agreement. Approved the continuation of the trial period through 9:30, 25, and delegate authorization to the city manager to execute the agreement upon review and approval by purchasing and contracting staff and the city attorney. And 8I, Memo of Agreement Between the Department of Homeland Security and the Titusville Police Department. Approved this memorandum of agreement between the Department of Homeland Security and the Titusville Police Department.
Okay, city clerk, do we have cards on individual, on this consent agenda?
Yes, sir. We do. We have two cards, and then also received an additional card, and I'm not sure which item it's for.
Mine.
I, okay. So we have three cards.
We may proceed.
We have Ms. Tony Shifalo for item D.
Tony Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. While I have very definite opinions on several items on this, I only want to speak about the grant that the Historic Preservation Board is putting forward. You know, this, this was a comprehensive research and documentation of the history, events, and landmarks within the city's historic African-American neighborhood and commercial district, and now we're seeking a heritage and education grant to acknowledge and promote the legacy of the Titusville's African-American history. We're going to build on the Joynerville and beyond report by implementing a program that would look into interpretive signs, signage throughout the community. We're going to create a walking tour brochure, and we're going to update our online historic tours around the area. And I'm especially proud of these projects because I've been involved with all of them. But some of the ideas that we have, and we're going to take up with the concerned citizens who are getting very active in this also, to commemorate places that aren't there anymore because, let's face it, most, a lot of places aren't there through urbanization and urban renewal. But we want to do little things like maybe little stumblestones in the pavement that we have on this site. that we have on this site was such and such. Something that I brought up, that they told me I don't really need, but is street topper signage that says that South Avenue between, let's say, the railroad tracks, and Park Avenue anyway should have them, the little tops that say that this is Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. There's a sign down at the 405 where you turn off a Highway 50, and there's 52 different signs, and you're trying to get into one lane and avoid the people going to the gas station. Who sees that sign? I looked for it for weeks. They told me it was there. I looked and looked and looked, and finally, one day, somebody else was driving, and I saw it. I still haven't seen the sign up here at this end of the street.
It's there.
You say it's there, but I'm always driving when I'm in town. Oh, because my husband is not driving in America while black. So also, he looks Jamaican, he talks Bahamian. Poor guy, I'm worried about ICE.
Thank you, Toni. Next.
Stan Johnston on A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Toni's going to be my fan of white today. Okay, Toni, you can show this and the other side, too, the other side, too. So I'm especially going to speak about AA and AE. My name is Stan Johnston. Well, you know that. But this has to do with 6A, B, and C also, 8A, because is that the report and what the student advisory received from me at this last meeting they had is this. Is this. It says $100 and $1,000 rewards to the people. And one of them, it says, you can hold it up, fraud. It says $1,000 to anyone to find the missing report the city paid $70,000 for. $1,000.
What does that have to do with A?
Please, can we stop the-
No, we're not going to stop the call.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
You're very cruel, okay? I don't like it.
You're talking on an item. I want to know what that-
This is the same thing you did last time. In other words, you interrupted me, you took my time. I don't like what you're doing. Do you understand that? Do you understand? I don't like what's going on.
Stan, I don't really care.
I know you don't care.
I want to know what you're talking about has to do with item A.
You're interrupting me. You're taking my time. I don't appreciate what you're doing. All right?
Keep it up.
Okay, all right, now, okay. All right, so the other side, too. We have a dam, a dam. The students know nothing about the dam. So I'm telling you that I just went to a meeting, the last student conference meeting, and I told you, I said, this is what I gave them. This has to do what's going on in the city. The secrets, exposure, lies, deception, fraud. That's what's going on. They know nothing about it. And I think that it's okay that I went ahead and gave that information. Regardless of what you say, Mr. Cole, regardless of what you say, you're another person who says it's okay to spray people with sewage. By God, that's not right. None of you are, except, what's her name? Ms. Mosk- whatever her name is. So anyways, I'm not pleased with you taking my time. Okay, I'm almost over, so I'm going to go ahead to the next one, 8E. 8E has to do with our fire chief. Fire chief, I don't think we should be giving the money like that because these guys are going nuts. In other words, on SNJ Oaks, what they did is they approved for two houses and three lots. They approved what they had was wider than that. They had 26-foot wide cleared area for private, they approved an eight-foot access.
What does this have to do with cardio pulmonary assist systems?
I'm saying if they're doing this kind of stuff, they should be looking for what they're doing.
If you had a heart attack, wouldn't you want them to come and try to save you?
I think you're taking my time.
I am.
In other words, you're taking my time, but you don't care. You don't care. I know you don't care.
Not if you're talking off subject, I don't care.
It's not, what I'm talking about is what they're doing with their money, our money.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Next card.
The last card is Kathleen O'Rourke on I, on item I.
Thank you. Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. And really, I'm just here for a little clarification, and I probably should know this. But I would like to know where or how we can find more details of I, because it's hard to understand what the impact is.
Say that again, the details?
Of I. The memo of understanding between Department of Homeland Security and the Titusville Police Department. And I'm just not sure where to go to get that information. So I'm just up here simply to ask that and say somewhat it's a pleasure to have really people here who are elected as opposed to somebody else who's not here today. But I won't say any more than that.
So let me try to get-
Just want to know where to get more.
I'll try to get that information to you.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me just ask, does anybody, city manager, do you know what the memo of agreement? Does anybody have that information here readily available? I don't want to put any, if you don't have it, we'll get it to her.
We can get a copy of that.
Thank you. That's all I need. I don't need it this second. And thank you. I appreciate your answering when I speak. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, do you have anything?
I do have a question. On the St. John's Basin feasibility study, I was looking at the map of the area that it covered, and I don't know if we can answer this, but would that take in Fair Glenn? I know Baker subdivision, it's in there, but I didn't know if Fair Glenn was in there.
I don't believe it is, but we can look into it. Looks like it's part of it, but not the entire portion. There's a couple of basin splits on the north side there. We can give you one that has a breakdown by subdivision, if that would help.
Okay, that'd be great. I gotta say, I'm tickled to death about the grant agreement, which is the St. John's Basin feasibility study, because we're looking at reversing the flow of water to the river. But secondly, we're looking at stopping the flooding in Baker subdivision. And that's been a problem forever, so thank you, guys.
Anything else from counsel? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Moved by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Stokoe. Are you ready for questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposes?
We need a roll call.
Requires a roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Thank you. Roll call, city clerk.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Now, moving on to ordinances, second reading.
Yes, sir. This is ordinance number 13-2025, revoking the adverum tax abatement for Bricks Brewery Project LLC and recovery of abated taxes. And the city attorney will read the ordinance.
Yes, this is the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance. Ordinance number 13, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, revoking the economic development adverum tax abatement to Bricks Project Brewery LLC and providing for an effective date.
Okay. We have any cards?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Excuse me, Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. And some of y'all wonder, well, why is this guy speaking all the time, coming up here and bothering, taking all our time? Well, I'm telling you why, because, guys, the City of Titusville has closed doors. I ask questions, I don't get answers. All the time, all the time. Closed doors on things that are going on for years.
Stan, stay on subject.
Okay, I'll just pass.
Okay. Any more cards? Okay. Counsel?
Want a motion?
If there are no questions, yes.
I'm not seeing it.
All right.
Move to approve ordinance number 13-2025, revoking the adverum tax abatement for the Bricks Project Brewery.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions? Roll call vote. I got that right that time, didn't I?
Yes. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Moscoso? Yes.
Unanimous vote, it's passed. Item B?
9B is ordinance number 14-2025, providing for appeals of boards and adjustments and appeals. BAA decisions to be heard by city council. And this is also conducting a second reading, public hearing, and the city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 14, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending section 3155, Appeal to Decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, to be renamed Appellate Review of Decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, by providing that decisions of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals may be appealed to the city council. By amending chapter 34 Procedures, Article 5, Variances and Appeals, by amending a new Division 10 Appeals to the City Council, including applicability, notice requirements, by amending Development Review Procedures, manual section 17.4, Board of Adjustments and Appeals fees, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Do we have any cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Stan Johnston, I've been here for many years, over 50 years, and this is my hometown. This is a particularly confusing matter that I believe should also pertain to another committee or that we have that is like a secret committee. Does anyone know what I'm talking about? How about, it's called the DRC, the Development Review Committee. And it also is that we have some kind of a thing in which we have now, we have, I'm not sure, it's been maybe for three years or so, is that someone, and I believe it's maybe still Peggy Bisaka, she can go ahead and have waivers and other things done without going through council or without going through, and that's what I'm saying.
Stan, 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 stay on subject, please. It's, this is providing appeals of the Board of Adjustment for them to come to city council rather than go to court. That's what this B is about. This is what the ordinance is about.
Thank you. But what I'm sharing with you is you're going to have the same problem with these other, in other words, the DRC, what they're doing. And what you have, someone in the city who's doing things, is just waiving things indiscriminately. And what has happened, I have seen the horrible thing that has happened to SNJ Oaks. It's a big deal. It's the same kind of nonsense that's going on in the city, but it's on an upper level now that is beyond, it's beyond reason what's happening. And the public is being, and public and citizens are being bypassed. I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Any other cards?
I received a card from Ms. O'Rourke, too. Is it for this item?
Okay.
Okay, it wasn't marked, so just checking.
I'm writing too quickly. Really, this is just fast. This is a real thank you. We asked for this. We had a really bad situation at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and I just want you to know, I'm really grateful that you went forward as a committee and looked into this and came up with this, and I'm very much in favor of it. I think always more money has more power, and at least in this, the citizens are having an opportunity to have a greater voice than we had before this. So thank you, and I do hope you all pass it.
Any other cards?
No, sir.
Member Moscoso?
Sure, I just want to thank our attorney, Richard Broome, and assistant attorney for putting this together. I know it was a lot of work, and you guys did it quickly, and so I appreciate it, and I know the citizens appreciate it. I do want to add just one thing to what Stan was saying. The DRC, I don't know if you guys know about that. I went through one of those, and it is a bit confusing. So that would be something I would love to get some education on, if you guys are educated on it. But it's quite interesting that there is a board of staff that can approve variances like waiving parking recommendations and things like that. And as a citizen, I just didn't know that existed. And so that could be something perhaps we look at in the future.
Okay. Any other comments?
My light's on. I'm sorry.
Me?
Me? Well, I hate to pour cold water on this. I am not in favor of changing the way we do this. To me, it's undercutting our Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Those guys are up there, they're professionals. It has worked as long as I can remember, and because of one issue, we're talking about changing it. So to me, we're undermining it. The people that are on that board are qualified. They're making good decisions. They're not making it based on politics, they're making it based on what the law says. And I apologize, but I watched, I watched some of the meeting, and I'm like, I sort of get with it here. Didn't watch the whole thing, watched the first 30 minutes. I will say, I would have liked to, I would like to change the qualifications to include an attorney, potentially environmental engineer, environmental scientist on that board. But I'm, I don't like the idea of undermining our boards.
Member Stokoe?
Yes. I guess I don't see it as undermining our boards. All of our other boards act as advisory boards. Other cities have this same process in place. To me, it's not a, this is going to happen all the time, but it's also, should we need it? Like, I don't anticipate it happening all the time, but should something arise, I feel like it's in the best interest of our citizens. We don't know the board makeup. We can maybe have some influence as we are elected right now. In the future, they're all volunteers. You've seen how difficult it is sometimes to get people to volunteer for our boards. And I think these decisions do have big impacts in our community, for our citizens. And to me, it's not an undermining at all. I think it just gives the citizens or applicant the potential to appeal a decision, which there's appeals processes already in place for numerous things. And so it still has the supermajority in there. I feel very confident that, I don't think this will be abused. I feel like if anything, this is giving citizens a voice to be able to just go through, like, a due process, if you will. So I don't really anticipate much changes, honestly, in the future. I think it just allows our citizens to be able to appeal, should they need to, to those of us that have been elected.
Sure. Yeah, I would agree with Member Stokoe. I think it is about due process, because there are, there will be occasions where citizens have concerns about an issue, and the only chance they could have to speak would be at petitions and requests. And I mean, these are, some of them are ongoing for two and three years. And so I think whatever the decision is, it's just to have the opportunity to have a decision made, I think is extremely important, because right now, the BAA can say, you know, you don't have standing, we're not going to hear it. And I don't think it's undermining. I agree with the other boards, like planning and zoning, it's all recommendations. And I always appreciate having extra eyes on things and hearing the different perspectives.
I have to say, I agree with Member Nelson, because this, we've had it this way for many years, and we've had one instance. Now, should this happen again and come up, I probably may agree. But I don't think we ought to change it just for one instance. That's my opinion. Anybody else?
I guess to that point, I don't see us changing it for one instance. I see that we're changing it should there be one instance. Now we have the appropriate process in place to ensure that citizens have that voice and have that right to be heard. I think that we can go back and forth on it. I think it's just a view, maybe a different perspective on what you feel like our role is up here as elected officials. To me, I feel like we've all worked really hard to become elected, you go through that process, people are electing you. So I feel like that burden really should ultimately fall on us. And I have a lot more, I guess, peace knowing that I'm doing everything I can within my power to represent all citizens and not giving over my limited authority and power to a volunteer board. We are giving it a lot to the advisory boards. We're still giving it over to BAA. They just have the right to appeal, and many of them may choose never to appeal. And we can always look at it if there is an issue. But I feel like, to me, if we potentially are hurting one person that comes before that would like to appeal and denying them that right to get their voices heard, that doesn't make me feel good. And I don't feel like I'm doing my job.
Any other comments? Any other comments from council? Your light is on again.
It's on again. Mr. Broome, since you did a lot of research on this and you researched what other cities were doing, would you mind sharing a bit of that and how you, you came to this? I know that we, there was some advisability from council, but how is it working in other cities?
I don't know that I can address whether it works or doesn't, but whether they do it, I know I provided you with three different cities. This council looked at those and asked that we kind of model it after, I believe it was Cape Canaveral. So, I can tell you, there are cities, I don't know how long they've done those, I didn't research that, or how often they are appealed to, but I just wanted to provide you that there were those three cities I know in this county that did that. Might be others in the state, but I did research the county. But I'm sorry, I don't, I can't answer you whether they like it, but it's been that way for some time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I don't know if I can answer your question better, but there are three cities I provided you, and we did model it after one of those.
Okay. And honestly, for me, this one is one I will definitely speak up on as a citizen. I'm telling you, it is extremely difficult, and I just want you to know that, that perspective of whether, whatever, whatever the decision is, just to have the opportunity to come up and to present is huge. And so, for me, you know, I think that is huge. We need to give everybody that, that opportunity.
Okay.
So, Richard, curiosity. Do both cities have an appeal to council, or is it a minority?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know the answer to that question, whether it's a majority or minority, I, I do not know. I, we researched the county, those are the three in the county I found that had that process.
Okay.
You know, and, and some, you know, your council is your Board of Adjustment, so there may be some that don't have a Board of Adjustment that would appeal to. So, I, I didn't research. If council would like that research, I'd be glad to do more research. We had a limited time. I, I'd be glad to do that if that's something you're interested in finding out.
I, I would sort of like to know that.
It would be a good thing to know how other cities do it.
And, and how they feel about it. Is it working? Is it not working? I would feel more comfortable.
So, you know, we could actually delay. Richard, is it possible that we can delay our decision until we get more information so we can make an educated guess on the best way to go on this?
It's whatever council chooses to do. You could choose to approve, you could choose to deny, you could choose to table. It's, you know, whatever the majority of council chooses to do, but you do have the ability to do any of those options.
Okay.
So, I think my motion would be to table it to the next meeting, the first meeting in May. Yeah, let Richard get that to answer.
Sorry, can I have discussion?
A second.
A second, okay.
Okay. Can I get a second on the motion to table it? Okay. Dies for no second. All right?
Yeah, I, I, this one is, if I can be very honest, it's very time sensitive. This is the only appeal that we've had in, I'm not sure how many years. I mean, we saw the list, it was very, very little. We have something coming up to Board of Adjustments tomorrow, so, I mean, I respect whatever decision you make, but I'm just asking, as a citizen, I think this is a very important process, and if, you know, and I think it's something, Richard, if we put this in, would it be something that we could remove? It's, it's.
Council has the authority to approve ordinances and to repeal ordinances, so.
So, say, it gets, we feel like it's being abused, perhaps that's something that we could, we could review, review in six months, and so that could be part of the motion, is we do it for six months, and then in six months, we review how it's going.
Megan?
I'm sorry.
It sort of sounds like you were too vested in this process, in this issue, this standing, and I don't want to hurt your feelings, but, you know, we talk about optics, and so my question to you, are you doing it because, are you saying this because you're vested in this project? Can you step back and look at it analytically?
Yeah, I, I think if this, if this goes through, first of all, I want it for every citizen. I never want citizens to be in that position. However, if it does come to council, I will recuse myself, because I do live on that street, so I'm not planning on voting on this issue if it does come. My, my desire is, I never want citizens to ever feel like they have not been heard, that they don't have the opportunity. That is, that is it, and that's across the board. This one in particular, if it does come to council, I have to recuse myself, I live on that street. So, whether this passes or not, I'm not voting on it. It is for the, the citizens, this needs to be, they need to have the opportunity. I mean, I think that's what we're elected for, to hear them.
My question is, I listened to part of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and it sounded like the whole issue was standing, which to me is a legal issue, is not, it's like being in front of a court, and the court, you, you always have to prove you have standing, that you have a direct interest in a matter. And so, yeah, stepping back and looking at it, I'm like, that's a pure legal argument. So, sitting here and saying, we're going to hear it de novo, is great, but the same problem exists, you still have to prove that standing, and if three of, three of us, four of us up here say there's no standing, there's still no standing.
Okay, I think that it's been beaten to death. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Yep, I would move to approved ordinance number 14-2025, providing for appeals of Board of Adjustments and Appeals, decisions to be heard by city council.
I second.
Moved and second. Any questions? We'll have a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cole?
No.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
No.
So, I'm assuming that a tie vote means that it's denied?
It requires three votes to pass any ordinance or resolution.
So, if the ordinance or resolution was two to two, what?
Then the motion, that motion fails.
The motion fails, okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances, the first reading.
Item number 10A is the ordinance number 15-2025, Expedited Residential Building Permits and Subdivisions, and this is conducted first reading, and the city attorney will read the ordinance.
Okay.
I just wanted, could you ask the question on the last, I want to clarify, that the motion fails the, when approval or denial at that point is that the motion failed, and there could be another motion, but again, two to two, and like any other ordinances or resolutions on your agenda pursuant to your code, the affirmative vote of three members shall be necessary to adopt any ordinance or resolution. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, I understand. Okay, now the first reading.
Ordinance number 15-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to create a process for issuance of residential building permits and subdivisions prior to approval of final plat and replacing the term sketch plat with preliminary plat, and clarifying that preliminary plat is now titled site plan. By amending sections 30-40 tree survey required before permit, 34-8 public hearing approvals required, 34-60 conceptual plat, 34-92 minimum requirements, application and approval, 34-93 additional requirements, 34-144 approval, that Chapter 34 Procedures, Article 3 subdivisions, Division 5 plat subdivision 1 sketch plat, conceptual plan is renamed preliminary plat conceptual plan, and amending section 34-151 procedure, and by creating sections 34-153 submittal procedures, amending subdivision 2 preliminary plat site plan to be renamed site plan, and amending sections 34-161 preliminary plat definition to be renamed site plan definition, and amending 34-162 submittal procedures, 34-163 required exhibits, and 34-164 review procedures, and subdivision 3 final plat, sections 34-171 definition, 34-172 procedure, and 34-173 required exhibits. By amending Chapter 34 Procedures, Article 3 subdivisions, to create a new Division 9 procedure for issuance of building permits prior to approval of final plat, amending sections 34-174 purpose, 34-175 procedure, 34-176 required submittals and exhibits, 34-177 construction, 34-178 procedure for issuance of building permits prior to approval of final plat, 34-179 final plat, and 34-180 recording of final plat required, amending sections 34-201 recording of final plat required, 34-214 application classifications and review schedules, and 37-1 definitions, and by amending Development Review Procedures, manual section 6, master plans, 11 sketch plat to be renamed preliminary plat, 12 preliminary plat to be renamed required submittals for expedited permitting for residential permits prior to approval of the final plat, 14.5 site plan required exhibits, and 17.2 land development fees, providing for grandfather provisions, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
Okay. Brad, can you give us Cliff Notes?
I'll refer you to page 199 and 200 of your packet, starting on that first page, 199 illustrates the current process that we have in the city. I do have those slides available, where Media Service can bring them up on the screen. So, just a synopsis, do you see, if you probably recall, previous, previous presentation I gave you several meetings ago about our plating process, this three, three-step process, where first you have a pre-application meeting with our staff, and then you formally submit to us what's called a sketch plat, and it's a very detailed concept plan to us, laying out the subdivision, entrance ways, that gets approved with recommendation by P&amp;Z, approval by council. The second step is a preliminary plat, that's an administrative process, it's conjoined with our site plan, which is process, which is the full engineering drawings, and then the third step is a final plat, and that comes before planning and zoning with recommendation to you for final approval and acceptance, and then it becomes a recorded document, formally subdividing land. On the next page, 200 of your packet, is the new process with the required steps that are outlined in the news, in the statute. Basically, pre-application meeting will still be required. The first step now, instead of being called sketch plat, will be called preliminary plat, but it's basically the same thing. You're providing to us a very detailed conceptual plan. Second process will be that site plan, engineering drawings, which is an administrative process, and then the final step would be that final plat, again, with your acceptance. The option to the applicant is if they would like to have half of, you know, up to half of their lots to have a building permit issued to them prior to final plat, which we have to include in our, our code by October of 2024, so we're a little late, but then they have the option of going up, asking for up to 75% of their lots to have, to be able to have a building permit on them prior to final plat, which we have to have in our code before 2027. This ordinance will address both those. They go through that option, they will have to provide to us a lot of detailed information upfront, so basically, they'll give us the concept plan, the preliminary plat and the site plan upfront, which then you will see, basically, you'll see three documents. You will see the preliminary plat, you'll see the master building plan, which is basically a sheet, really, that identifies which lots that we have negotiated with them as to which would be appropriate to go ahead and get building permits on prior to final plat. And I believe they will see a, there was one I added. Master building permit review, which I mentioned, so it's really two main things that you'll see. And if you'll see on that screen there, that, that box there in the top right of the corner, preliminary plat and master building plan to the planning and zoning and to city council with applicant acknowledging the risk. So, what they're going to see, oh, excuse me, next slide, please. I need to do that. Thank you.
I thought I was going blind there for a minute.
And I have the glasses on, too. Page 200 of your packet, you'll see there, if you can't see it on the screen, in the top right, it says preliminary plat and master building plan to the planning and zoning commission and to city council, the applicant should acknowledge the risk. What that means is, they would, at this point, we would have approved their site plan as consistent with the code. It comes before you, if for any reason you see there's a need to make any changes to that, the applicant needs to acknowledge the fact that the possibility may have to go back and go through another review to make those changes consistent with council's request or conditions. So, that's the risk. Otherwise, the process is laid out here where they'll be able to receive building permits for up to 50 or 75% of their lots prior to final plat.
Good. Thank you. Any questions from council on this one? This is a, is a first reading, so. City clerk, are there any cards on this one?
Yes, sir, we have three cards. The first one is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm going to try not to be interrupted by someone who doesn't know what they're talking about. That's Mr. Cole.
Well, there's someone standing up at the podium that doesn't know what they're talking about.
You're taking my time right now.
Yes, I am.
I know you are.
Go for it.
I don't like what you're doing.
Tough.
Because, okay, this is a very important issue, and the, the problem is, is I want you to understand, even though we have an architect in front of us, is that I'm showing you a, one sheet of a site plan with numerous red, 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 red lines of over 40 problems with this accepted, approved site plan. I want you to understand, as I, as a professional engineer, who have gone through many subdivisions and site plans with the city of Titusville, as a professional engineer, and also as a, as a land surveyor, I have done this, and I can't see, I have, have, I have never complained that I know of to the city or Brevard County or other counties of needing to expedite my plan because it's being too slow. Never have I done that. And I've got numerous plans, so I'm not sure what you're doing, because right now, I think that Brad Parish doesn't know what he's doing. This is an example of it. I want you to know is when, 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 when I review plans like this, there's no red lines left on it. No red lines. Now, what in the world is going on? Like, for example, in this case, is the city of Titusville has approved a survey that is disapproved by the state board, that is disapproved by many things that I have, I've brought to your attention, and even, and even Mr. Parish goes that, that the survey is, has a three-foot bust in the right way of Elizabeth Avenue, and yet, they're still building on it. I want you to know is that, is that the city has a survey of this, of this very area, and across the street is, is a minor plat approved by the city that has a difference in angle measurement for this, for this property of 36, about 36 minutes. Do you know how much that is? If you go 100 feet, sign of, of 36 minutes, you come out with about .1, .1. It's, in other words, it's 1% off. I go 100 feet, I'm off one foot. I go 400 feet, I'm off four feet. That's what we have in this project right now. We have a fake survey, they can't even find the survey corners. I talked to the surveyors doing it, he says, you can't find them, but yet, it's approved by the city, and they're building on that. This is a multimillion-dollar project, and I can't believe that the city is, is approving construction without a valid survey. This is what we have, and what I have happened when I was with Brevard County, is the city, the county approved the final plat, and then the roads weren't constructed in Von, Von Lake, so the, the county paid thou, over $100,000 to pave, pave the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
You're welcome.
Any other cards on that item?
Yes, sir. Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. I, I appreciate Mr. Parish's explanation. I think this is something that's coming down from the state legislature, and that we're trying to be proactive, Brad, and getting in front of it. Is that why, what this is all about? May I ask?
The deadline for us to have adopted this or have this in effect was October of 2024, so we're a little behind.
Oh, oh, we're not being proactive, we're being, catch up. Well, there were just a couple of things that caught my eye, and, and I would like to have further clarification and understanding about. and understanding about what it all is because this preliminary plat and site plan definition and changing this, it's more than just verbiage. And what I know about the thing coming down from the state legislature is that it's no good for the resident citizens of the state of Florida. It favors the developers. And that's what it's all about, why they want to expedite the permit. And there's things in here that just should scare you. Procedure for issuance of building permits prior to approval of final plat. Prior to approval of what they're finally gonna do, you're gonna already be building. Oh, well, okay. Permits prior to approval of the final plat. It's in here a couple of times. The one thing I did like was tree survey required before permit, but I'll bet that's going to be negated and not to be part of the plan that they have to do the tree survey. So I just think this is as scary as many of the other things that are coming down the pike and coming out of the state legislature that are bad news for the residents. I don't understand why people like Randy Fine and these other guys that are elected time after time, I don't understand why they hate their constituents so much. I just don't get it. I don't know why the constituents keep voting for them because they keep passing legislation that favors developers. And I'm scared of this. I think it's wrong. And I understand there's nothing we can do about it except vote. Oh, yeah. Another four years, everything will be built over already.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have any more cards?
Yes, sir, the last card is Elizabeth Parker.
Elizabeth Parker, Trevino Circle. I would disagree with the statement that we are behind. This, in fact, we have missed the deadline for the fifty percent. We are now looking at the deadline for the seventy-five percent, which is, in fact, the thirty-first of December, 2027, per paging of the bill CS SB eight twelve, which is on page one ninety of your packet. So that's the first thing. And it will allow seventy-five percent approval ahead of the final plat. However, I must state that in reviewing some of the packets that have been provided to the city with preliminary plaits or sketch plaits, as they're called, they are wholly insufficient to what is required according to this bill. So if you look at plating on page three and page four, it provides a very specific list of items that must be identified in the plat before it would be considered a preliminary plat, which could be approved to allow them to pre-build seventy-five percent of the homes and then hope that they will, in fact, meet the final plat. Additionally, there is a requirement that the easements and utilities have a guarantee of a hundred and thirty percent. So they have to buy a bond. They can't just go ahead and build without meeting that gate as well. I think we should not rush to put this ordinance into place because I don't think we really understand what this ordinance is. And simply changing the terminology from conceptual plat and sketch plat to preliminary plat does not necessarily address the needs of what is being handed down by the state, nor does it meet the needs of the citizens of this community. Further, with regard to our approvals, I have never seen a requirement for the master building plan to contain elevations, quality of build, or the blueprint of the proposed dwelling types demonstrating with a drawing, an image, or any other way for the city to have any understanding what it is that the master building plan truly is going to build. So I would ask that the city make sure that those things are incorporated as they go forward because it's very important to the existing communities that the new communities bring value to our city and do not degrade the value and quality of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards, City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, this is a first reading, so there's no vote. So we'll go on to item B.
Ordinance number sixteen dash two zero two five, School Zone Speed Enforcement Program. And this is a first reading. City Attorney, read the ordinance.
I also want to verify with the clerk. My ordinance says sixteen twenty twenty-four. That should be sixteen twenty twenty-five. Is that correct? An ordinance to the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter twenty of the Code of Ordinances by adopting a new Article Four entitled School Zone Speed Enforcement by adding Sections twenty seventy through twenty eighty, by providing for purpose, intent, and definitions, establishing a school zone speed enforcement program and authorizing use of speed detection systems within the city, providing for program implementation requirements and designation of school zones, providing for enforcement and administrative procedures, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
Are there any cards on this item?
We have one card, it's Dan Johnston.
Okay.
Stan Johnston, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is this has to do with what was presented tonight very well by our Police Department.
Yes.
And they did a fantastic presentation. I thought it was, I just thought one of the very best ones they've ever done. It was very well worded, and I just very pleased with it. So I'm not against this, and it looks like it's a good idea. And even though I've taken your precious time, thank you.
This is also a first reading, so there's no vote to be made. And we'll move on to item C.
Item C is a rezoning, number four dash two zero two four, Verona, also known as Willow Creek. Master plan amendment, and this is another first reading. And City Attorney, read the ordinance.
Ordinance number seventeen twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number six twenty twenty-four by amending the master plan of the Plan Development, PD Zoning District, imposed on approximately six hundred and thirty-eight plus minus acres of property located west of Chrisen Parkway, east of Challenger Parkway, south State Road four oh seven, and Interstate ninety-five at the western terminus of Willow Creek Boulevard, having Brevard County Partial ID numbers twenty-three, thirty-five, zero nine, zero zero one, twenty-three, thirty-five, zero four, zero zero two, twenty-three, thirty-five, zero nine, YR B point ten, and twenty-three, thirty-five, ten, BB dash one seventy-nine, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Do we have cards on this one?
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
This is, this, I believe, is Mr. Honeycutt. Am I correct? Mr. Honeycutt. I want you to notice on this project, Willow Creek, is that I've been following it some for probably about the last, oh, at least eight years. And I don't believe I've ever known a time, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they've asked for expediting, that they've complained that the city was doing them wrong. I don't believe they ever have. And they're moving along well. I think they're doing a good job. And notice down at the bottom, it says, P and Z has approved with some conditions, seven to nothing. It appears to me that Mr. Honeycutt and Associates is doing a good job. They're not having these problems that a bunch of other people are complaining about. They don't need to have all this expedition. And so, I didn't pronounce that correctly, I'm sorry. But y'all don't have to listen to this much longer. But understand is that I'm not pleased with at least ten requests for phone calls to council and CRA, and only one person has responded. Closed doors? Still, what do you call them? Stone walls. Thank you.
Okay.
It's a good project.
Any other cards, City Clerk?
Mr. Honeycutt is here, if you have any questions.
Well, probably next week, or two weeks. This was a first reading, no vote, so we'll... Any questions from City Council? No. So we'll move on to old business.
Item eleven A is the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Community Development Block Grant Program Funding Recommendations. And the recommended action is to approve the funding recommendations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six CDBG grant program year at an estimated amount of three hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. And Terry Franklin of Neighborhood Services is here to provide a presentation.
Okay, Terry. You're up.
Okay, this is your three-year plan for our SHIP program known as the State Housing Initiative Partnership Grant Program. And I just have a brief presentation on the outline of the L-HAP. So the purpose is to provide regulatory information on the L-HAP. It will cover the year, state fiscal years two thousand and six through twenty twenty-eight. And there's a resolution to adopt that L-HAP. We went over this earlier at the presentation meeting. These are the guidelines for the set-aside requirements in the SHIP program. And you'll find those in the L-HAP as we go through it. Section one of your L-HAP outlines the administrative parts, any partnerships that we propose, leveraging resources, the budgets for the three years, regulatory compliances, and efforts to reduce homelessness. Section two of the L-HAP will be where you find the types of strategies that we're proposing over the next three years. It outlines to the state the applicant selection criteria and any sponsors or developers' selection criteria. Section three of the L-HAP is where we list our affordable housing incentive strategies. Those are the one that your Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommends to council and those that council has adopted. And the final section in the L-HAP is where all your exhibits lie. And that will be our administrative budget, the timeline for estimated encumbrances and expenditures, which is outlined. Oh, I'm sorry. I brought up the wrong presentation.
You're doing item twelve B, I believe. We're on item eleven A.
Same presentation, I started with the presentation.
I couldn't find the resolution.
Well, if we could finish that, and then we'll just, it's okay to switch it around, isn't it? I mean, since she's already started?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll start with...
Start back where you stopped.
With the old business.
Got it. Okay.
So there's no presentation for the CDBG funding recommendations, your item eleven A. This is just a follow-up to the December third meeting where we had the RFP process and community input for the funding recommendations. I'll just entertain any questions you have on those recommendations.
Okay, are there any questions from the council? Are there any cards on this one?
Yes, sir, we have two cards. The first one is Ms. Tony Shifflow.
Tony Shifflow, Tropic Street. I've been following this for quite some time, several years. And I told Terry that I'm here tonight not to speak ill of the CDBG, but to support her. Yes, we definitely appreciate and want these grants. But on behalf of the concerned citizens, I would like to say that everything that we wanted to do with the CDBG money, Ms. Franklin told us, "Well, HUD won't allow that." So it was quite a dilemma. And we don't see much of the things that we wanted in this final document, which is this one right here, just this little part. However, the neighborhood, the community, needs a lot of attention, and we want it. And we don't want it, and the gentrification that's coming with the West Titusville Kemble Horn Vision for Titusville overlay that they want to do, that's coming before you eventually. And you'll begin to realize why I've been speaking against it so much because it's very detrimental to the neighborhood. And the neighborhood, I'm gonna let the concerned citizens speak for themselves, but to the CDBG grant money, I'd like to say that we hope that the paving of the streets with this money this year is somewhat of an improvement, although it's not what we want. We want the houses rehabbed. We don't want them torn down. Light means destruction, demolition. Light means demolition. We want rehabilitation. We want the houses brought back up to code and pretty standards. And we want development, we want infill. We don't want quadruplexes and four- and five-story buildings because the neighborhood is mostly, you know, we have some apartment buildings, but they're small scale. And scale and rhythm of a neighborhood, of a community, is what I'm striving for. And the CDBG money, well, we need it, we want it. We would like to have more input in how it's used. And I understand it's not, Ms. Franklin, it's coming, this is coming from the federal. And I'd just like to say before my time is up that I'm very familiar with working with CDBG money. I was instrumental in getting a closed school building in Little Five Points in Atlanta, Georgia, that was converted to a community center and art studios. My juggling club is still there. It's very successful and still up and running. And we did that with CDBG money. So our neighborhood wants to have, instead of paved streets, we want to have a food pantry again. So I know these kind of things can be done. But congratulations, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you, Tony. Any other cards?
Stan Johnston. We do have a card from Lynn Golden as well.
Hi, I'm Lynn Golden, President of the Concerned Citizen Group. And first of all, I would like to thank the Concerned Citizen Group for coming tonight. A lot of them had to leave because they have families and they have jobs, so they had to go home tonight. Normally, we meet with Terry on a weekly basis now. We meet with the Concerned Citizen Group before we meet with Terry. We come together with our advisory boards. We have a lot of professional people on the board. And I have given out projects that they would go in the community, what we have discussed, come back and bring the feedback to the group first, then we begin to talk about it. And then we call Terry and see what her schedule is to have a meeting with her. So we're doing that on a weekly basis now. And the other thing is that we are, we have a lot of things on the agenda for the CBG money target areas. So I wish not to discuss that until I get with the group. And then when we get with Terry, then we bring it back to City Council. And then you can approve, or we can advise why we chose to do these things at that particular timing. So that's what I'm doing. And everyone, Susan Pender moved back from Texas. She's been in the neighborhood. She moved back to her mom's old house. And I gave her a project. She has done her assignment. Clarence Horn, he comes to meeting to help when I can't make it on Tuesday. We have Mr. Rodell Ray. And Ms. Wendy Houston is on, like, some of the SHIP program with the housing, to go around in the neighborhood and see what we need to be done. And so we're on some projects. And so we'll bring them back to you after we have the meeting with Terry. And then we'll negotiate what we need to do at that particular timing. Amen. Okay.
Lynn, can I ask? One of the projects right around the neighborhood, I thought of, one was that area on Sycamore Street where apparently we need a fence. And I also thought about parking for a plant and park. You know, the new playground equipment's there, they've redone the basketball courts, but if you want to go there with your kids, there's no parking. So that was one of the projects I thought about, and I didn't know how you guys felt about it.
Okay, some of these things that you, like Kurt Tonight, brought up. We were not aware of that trail. I think Teri was not aware at that particular time, and it hit emails or city council put it out, and people were calling me from different community groups, what's going on? So I said, well, let us have a meeting. My understanding, it was canned at that particular timing, and then I would call a meeting with the community so they can be able to discuss what they want about the trail, and those that lives in those areas where the trail is supposedly be planned, then those people can come back and address the issue, because a lot of time, people may not want that in their neighborhood with a lot of traffic or people riding bikes and so. So there's a lot to be considered about this program.
I'm just asking you, consider that project also, see what you guys think about it.
Yeah, well, that's going to be on the agenda, our next meeting, and we'll get back with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other cards?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I've always worked for the city, I think 2001, 2008, and I've worked with Teri. And I've seen something that I'm really pleased that we have her, we're lucky to have. We're just, I told you about Mr. Cook. He's incredibly qualified and does so much good for her. Teri has also, and Teri, as far as I can see, is, she's been persecuted at times because she is so good to the people. You believe that? I believe it. I was arrested for checking on a sewage spill. So anyhow, she's weathered some hard times, and thank you, Teri, for being here, and she's doing a, she's not doing a good job, she's doing a very good job. So thank you, Teri.
Thank you, Stan. Any other cards? Council, do you have any questions?
Can I provide some clarification before your discussion?
Please.
So on these funding recommendations, there's three activity groups that the funding will be in the action plan. So what we're voting on tonight is to provide funding recommendations to these groups so that they can be in the CDBG action plan for next year. We have to be specific in the action plan of what we're doing with the funding. We can have some flexibility in the language so that it covers multiple activities, but there's basically groups. So for public services, we're requesting to fund four agencies at $45,000. And then your next group is your infrastructure and other program activities, and this is for the year four of the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan that was developed with the community. And after two meetings with their group, we have a list here of their request, and they're listed in their priority order. And that was lighting improvements, sidewalk improvements, blight removal, public facilities, which can include city-owned facilities or nonprofit-owned facilities that provide a service to the community. And then last on the list is street improvements, if there's any additional streets after the others are considered. And then your third group is your administrative group for the Neighborhood Services Department to administer the grant. So those are the three groups that we are, will use this information to finalize in the CDBG action plan at the final public hearing in May.
Okay, thank you, Teri. Any questions for Teri? Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the funding recommendations for fiscal year 2526 CDBG grant program year at an estimated amount of $307,980.
Second.
Moved, second, questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposes? So move. You notice I looked? I wasn't sure what I was doing. Now we'll go on to Teri. We'll go to B.
I'm just going to say right here.
Okay. Item B.
Item B is the Housing Affordability Study, and Brad Parrish here is here to answer any questions and receive your direction regarding a housing affordability study and the use of budgeted funds in the amount of $90,000. He has a presentation.
I don't have a presentation on this one, but just a summary of what's happened in the past, I guess, nine months, started in, I wrote a little history about the actions of this item. We do have, council did give us direction to go forward and do this study. We solicited requests for a vendor. We selected a vendor, and a contract was brought before you, which then, at that time, you decided not to go forward with. And then there were subsequent meetings after that where there was some discussion, but we have not received direction from you. So what I have here is a recommendation on page 498 of your packet. The funds are budgeted to do this study, that is, an affordability housing study. The last time this was brought up before you, you discussed the option of, you discussed the question about CDBG and HUD, and HUD had recommended that we do a affordable housing study, which I believe we will have partial funding for available next year, but it won't be full funding for it. So the request to you is to, one, either go forward with what was originally approved, which is to utilize the funds as budgeted to develop a housing affordability study. The previously approved scope, which is attached in the agenda, is for a study that may identify several options to address housing affordability issues in the city, including an inclusionary housing regulation and/or linkage fee. And I did state here that an inclusionary housing regulation will require the city to approve an offset for the construction of affordable housing units in a new development, and a linkage fee requires a study to determine the appropriate fee. So it could include several recommendations, including those two types of regulations, if you just so decided to adopt something like that after a study is shown to you. It will include a variety of other recommendations potentially. The other option is to allocate the funds, which are currently budgeted right now, but just use it for other means, and then allocate funds for fiscal '26 in that budget to supplement the CDBG housing affordability study and include the same scope of work or other direction that you desire.
Okay. Are there any cards on this item?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I don't like to interfere with what's going on here, but $90,000 for a study, boy, if we could give that humanity, Habitat for Humanity or something else, then that would probably be a better place to look for advice and so forth on this. Habitat for Humanity has just cut costs crazy at times and done a fantastic job. And also the Titusville Housing Authority, although they're not selling homes, but it seems like you could get some good advice from them. I think that $90,000 for a study, how could you spend $90,000 on a study on housing? I mean, everybody else is doing the same thing. How can we do that, spend $90,000 on a study? I don't get it. But maybe it makes sense, but it doesn't, I have questions, I just have doubts about it. So it's too late, I guess, what I'm saying is probably too late. Thank you.
Any other cards on that?
No, sir.
Counsel?
Yeah.
Member Muscoso? I'm sorry. Member Stokoe?
Yes, I was just looking at the history of this, because I know we talked about this before, and to clarify, I think we did not want to move forward with it, we had other priorities. And then I do see your note in here where they strongly recommend you have a study if you're going to receive funding, so are you recommending that we do some type of study, or we will strongly be in jeopardy of losing our CDBG funding? That would help me to make a better decision.
So when you're preparing for your five-year consolidated plan in the CDBG program, HUD requires us to include in that plan data that involves housing stock, the condition of the housing stock, the housing market, any areas where it affects the affordability of housing for our citizens, and the only way we can get that data is through a study. Not having a study would, what that would in turn cause us to use is old data from the last five-year cycle. So you may not have current data that will allow us to build into the plan to address current issues. Would it not doing a study affect funding? No. But it would allow us to have accurate data so we know that the plan is affecting current situations.
When, how old is our last study that we do have? Is it five years?
Oh, it's like 15 years old.
15 years? Okay. Okay, and that's honestly where I'm kind of conflicted on this. I just think that we have other priorities, and I even had made a note, like, we already have Live Local happening at the state. There are already things in place to kind of help with our affordable housing issues at the time, for the time being, and even as we have the concerned citizens here, we're thinking about other initiatives that we're wanting to do. We're kind of in transition right now. I would rather not utilize those funds at this time until we kind of have better direction. We're getting ready to start our budget process on Thursday with our strategic goals. So this, to me, is just not a high priority. I think there are already things in place, I feel like, that are moving forward to help with this, so that's kind of where I'm leaning right now.
Member Muscoso?
Sure. I feel like we do have a lot of national and regional data from HUD that perhaps we could look at and to help us get a better understanding. Is it possible to look at what other cities nearby are doing? Have any of these cities done a study recently? I mean, I know that that's not Titusville, but perhaps we could look at what they're doing and seeing if some of the trends would be similar to what's happening here in Titusville. And then also, my second question would be, is there an additional cost for the studying of inclusionary zoning? Or are those two separate things? Like, could we study, spend part of the money for studying affordable housing, and then, let's say, the other $30,000 was for inclusionary zoning?
The last time we did this study with Neighborhood Services, correct me if I'm wrong, was about $30,000, and that was 15 years ago. So if we tried to do the base study that they did last time, it'd probably be, I would estimate, $40,000, $50,000 based on the costs of doing these kind of things now. The additional costs, we estimated in there, we plugged it into the budget mainly because of the two other portions of that study, which is inclusionary zoning and linkage fee. To do a linkage fee, you have to have a study anyway, regardless. In inclusionary zoning, you don't necessarily have to have a study, you just have to have a means of offsetting it, but a study will help you figure out what that offset is. So that additional funds, we estimated to be added into the budget on top of a base affordable housing study, based on what we saw other jurisdictions do when they were doing, conducting the same thing. So the, we budgeted what we thought would be the amount necessary to do a base study plus these two additions to it of looking at linkage fees and inclusionary zoning and determining an offset, at $90,000. That was approved in the budget. The bid that we received was for $76,000. Now, what Teri has told me early today is that they may have some funds available off the budget this year of about $15,000 to be able to help with that. Next year, I'm not sure what that might be.
Next year is kind of a guess right now, depending on how CDBG is funded.
So if you do decide to go forward with it next year, or maybe even just a base study without looking at inclusionary zoning or linkage fees at all, just doing what is necessary to meet whatever HUD may be requesting, even her funding may not be enough to supplement. We're still going to have to use partially general funds to help supplement that study.
Thank you.
Member Nelson?
Thank you. I think the reason we looked at a study was because we were looking at inclusionary zoning or the linkage fee. And so when we got the original quote, we sort of went, wow. But at the same time, you know, the Live Local Act was coming down, and so we were like, that's providing the affordable housing, we hope. So I think that's the reason we didn't go forward on the study, but I agree with you guys, I hesitate to spend this much money on this.
What are the pros and cons? If we spend it, what do we gain? If we don't spend it, what do we lose? I guess, simply put, I'm swayed also about it, because there's so many other things we could spend the money on. So basically, what do we gain by doing it? I know we would have a more up-to-date study, and we wouldn't have a study that's 15 years old, but aside from that, is there anything else that you feel would be of positive value?
The last time, as Teri said, the last time we did this was more than, was 15 years ago, and I'm sure that data was probably based on, on that study was based on data that was a year old in itself. So we just have a lot about, our data right now is outdated as far as specific to Titusville and the housing stock and the needs and the trends going on. So that would help us, if we had something that was more up-to-date, help her department, it would help our department as far as land use and planning. So more up-to-date and more accurate data is always helpful. If you go with the base study, basically, generally helps her department, and it could help us, too, with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and their recommendations to you in the SHIP incentive plan, which includes a lot of recommendations that may, if you recall, include things such as trying to find ways to reduce impact fees, reduce parking requirements, all these different strategies that we could consider changing our code or coming up with programs to make it easier for people to be able to afford homes and create new affordable housing units.
You say the base plan, are we still talking the $90,000? Or is the base plan less than that?
So again, I would estimate, if we did the same studies we did 15 years ago, you're probably looking at about $40,000 to $50,000 minimum, honestly, to do that kind of study. What we added in there was based on what I saw other jurisdictions do related to evaluating whether it was a good idea or not to do an inclusionary regulation and a linkage fee. And so I estimated an additional $40,000 to be on top of that, just to evaluate that. The bid we got back, though, was for $76,000, significantly less than what we budgeted. In addition, from Teri, from what I understand, she has some available funds right now to help supplement that out of CDBG of about $15,000. So that reduces the amount that we would need to take from the general fund today. That's this year's budget.
Yeah, and if I may, the study is more about the affordability of housing, not so much about affordable housing development. I just want to differentiate between that. We use the data from these studies to realize the burden cost on our citizens to make their homes affordable that they may already own. So there's a lot of the data out of these studies that go into that.
You're making it hard, aren't you?
This is splitting the baby. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would say, I do think $90,000 or the $70,000 would be excessive, but I would be okay with the base affordability study and also with the $15,000 that could go towards it. That would bring the number down to a more reasonable number that could also help with HUD and then the data that you guys have.
Member Nelson?
In legal terms, that's splitting the baby. So, Rich, it's true. Richard's laughing.
Richard, can we, can we make a motion?
I would move to.
Vice Mayor Cole, we did get one additional card on this item.
Okay.
Dwight Sigler.
Dwight Sigler, there's no area in Bubba County that has spent more CDBG money than East Mims. We've torn down over 70 wooden homes and rebuilt them in concrete block, and we're doing rehabs for $35,000 in Br... And we're doing rehabs for thirty-five thousand dollars and bringing them up to code. And you guys are going to spend thirty, ninety thousand dollars to do a study? You can study the whole goddamn county for that? This is ridiculous. Y'all throw money away like it's just, you know, hey, throw it away. It don't matter. Ninety thousand dollars. We don't, we do our own studies. And if you haven't been there, drive through East Mims. You see, I'll take you on a tour. You show you all the progress we've done from water lines to fire hydrants to gymnasiums and all of this. And you guys can't even manage three hundred thousand dollars. You want to take thirty, ninety thousand dollars? You can rehab three houses in Titusville for that? Come on now. Wake up.
Vice Mayor, based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like that you're looking into possibly just doing what you necessarily need to do, which is a base study, basically, that would not include an analysis of linkage fee or inclusionary zoning. And then to budget that, it looks like then it would be for the fiscal year 2026. Because that's when we would necessarily need to do it anyway.
I don't want to speak for the council, but it almost seems like that's the consensus that we have.
Yeah, I would say so. Depending on that cost, I'm just not in favor of the ninety thousand. I feel like, I mean, even if you look at the history of Bubba, typically Titusville, we trend more affordable than any other place in the county. So I think if we were living in a, we had different statistics for our city, and this was, we really needed to focus on this and had an issue, I'd feel differently. But right now, this is just not a priority for me. I'd rather see us spend those funds differently.
So why don't we proceed with a motion?
I'm not sure what the motion would be.
I think Member Moscoso might have it.
You might need to help me out. So I move to approve a affordability study, a base affordability study, and request to use the fifteen thousand dollars for the year 2026 budget. What will that do?
I would suggest, and to provide more flexibility, we can propose the fiscal '26 budget with what you're, what we're hearing from you. You're basically asking us to see if we can utilize available funds from CDBG, but propose in the budget any supplemental funds from the general fund just to do a base study
Yes.
for fiscal '26. And that will be proposed to you in the budget.
Would you could give us an estimate roughly of how much that would be, including the fifteen thousand?
So I would estimate, again, just a base study without the analysis of linkage fee or inclusionary zoning, it'd probably be about forty, fifty thousand dollars. And so if there is fifteen thousand dollars available, estimate it for next year. What Terry said, she's not, she doesn't have those numbers yet. We'll ask for the difference and propose that in the budget to you.
City Attorney, does Member Moscoso's motion, could that stand to reflect what we want? She has, we don't have a second yet, so...
Yeah, I believe her motion was to conduct a base affordable study, which I think she's going to, would want to clarify that is not include linkage.
Yes, to not include linkage or inclusionary zoning.
Yes.
The only other clarification may be 2026, the money.
Okay.
So Brad, do you want to assist her and...
You could just say the motion for me, that'd be okay.
So you just want us to budget this base study for the fiscal year 2026?
Yes, to budget the base study for 2026. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, and discussion. Just one more comment.
No.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so this is giving direction to the city manager to build that into the budget, which we will still have room during our budget process as we're going through things to say, hey, maybe we'd rather, we were seeing unfunded items, maybe we want to shift some funds. So we're giving direction to build it into the budget, but we could still have throughout that budget process the flexibility to change.
Certainly, we'll include it in the city manager's proposed budget, which is due at the end of July. And obviously, in the workshop in August, you can confirm or modify that as council wishes.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion and the second? All right. Any other questions? Hearing no other questions, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposes, so moved. Interim city manager salary consideration? I thought you were doing this for free.
I'm going to defer to our HR director to discuss that.
Okay. He was hiding back there. I'm like, where is he?
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
How are you? I'd refer you to the memorandum that's in your packet that we prepared for you. We were instructed to agree to a salary consideration for our interim. We did a market peer study, and you see that result. So what the interim city manager agreed upon is less than that average, less than the former city manager's pay. And it will create a savings in the former city manager administration salary account. And where the support services with Mr. Bate's former position will actually be frozen, and there won't be any salary coming out of that position. So I think all around, it's a very favorable consideration for you to...
Okay, are there any questions from council? Of course.
Thank you. I actually, if it's okay, I just want to read something, an email I got, just to get it out here. It says, "The city human resources director lists certain cities as our target market peers, and I would respectfully suggest that some of the cities are not peers and should be deleted and others should be added. For example, Winter Park is not a peer city in any sense of the term, neither as to demographics, average income, market value, or residential commercial property, cost of living, size, numerous other factors. Winter Park, with a population of twenty-nine thousand plus, is listed as a peer city. The listed peer city chart fails to list numerous other cities that are also part of our competitive market. If Cocoa is listed, then Rockledge and West Melbourne should be listed, and both are larger than Cocoa." So I just wanted to get that out. And I do kind of agree with that. I would have liked to see some of those cities on as we had done that because really comparing Titusville and Winter Park, it's apples and oranges with a few things. And that being said, it does feel like a lot when you look at it. But then when you break it up to, this is going to be a position for perhaps three months, perhaps like less than ten thousand dollars, I feel comfortable with it. I know that it is a sticker shock, but I've really appreciated what Mr. Bate's doing and taking into consideration that there will be a freeze on his salary. I'm comfortable moving forward.
Do we have any cards on it, sitting?
We have one card, it's Stan Johnston.
Okay, Stan?
My name is Stan Johnston, and I've worked for the city of Titusville. I have a pension. And I've been here for fifty-four years or so. And we used to have just a city manager, no assistant city manager, and nobody like Jim Thomas. And so we keep adding to this. I want you to understand is that our former city manager, since 2014, never returned any of my calls, never responded to any of my emails.
Stan, this is for his salary only, okay?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
In other words, I don't see that there's much to replace here. I don't see that Mr. Larrice did hardly anything. I know you have praised and praised and praised him. You praise him in spite of, you know, when I talk about the fraud, when I take about the sewage spill, considerable nonsense. And I've written about all these illegities...
Can you tie that back to a salary compensation?
That's what I'm talking about.
You haven't said it yet.
Well, then you're not listening. You're absolutely not listening. And what I'm saying is the city manager...
Look, Stan, I'm not going to sit up here and hear you talk. You come up and speak about an item, speak about the item.
I'm talking about our city manager job, who's done obviously nothing.
We're talking about the interim city manager's salary consideration. Stay on point.
Okay. Stop interrupting me and taking my time. That's what you're doing. I don't appreciate what you're doing at all.
I don't really care, Stan.
I know you don't care. You don't care for the city. What we have is called a... You said dictatorship. In other words, we have a policy in which, a loyalty, a loyalty policy or something like that, or disloyalty policy. In other words, the city of Titusville, in other words, votes to spray people with piss and poop. And this is the same guy right here. I guess he's going to continue that policy.
Well, I guarantee you, Stan, if you don't talk...
You're the person that's doing it.
If you don't talk about what you're supposed to be talking about, you can sit down.
I'm talking about what the city has been doing, and it's not worth a penny. In other words, you're doing this wrong. In other words, you don't have a loyalty, you have a loyalty for the city instead of a loyalty to the public. That's what you do. This is, you have a disloyalty to the public and a loyalty to the city. That's what the city's been doing, except for Mr., what's your name, Mr. Moscoso. So I don't like what's going on, and I don't think he should be getting any raises at all, at all. Not a bit from what's going on. I'm against any raises. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Stop interrupting me.
Any other cards? Okay. Will entertain a motion to accept the interim city manager salaries?
Move to approve the HR director's recommendation regarding the memo, the interim city manager salary.
Second.
Moved and second. Questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposes? So moved. New business.
Item 12A is the fiscal year 2025 mid-year budget review and financial update, which is required by the fiscal year by city charter. And we have our outstanding finance director, Terry Butler, and she does have a presentation.
Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. This is your FY25 mid-year budget review and financial update. Thank you, Terry. So each year, the city manager reaches out to the department heads and gets an update on their budgetary needs. Since our annual budget is prepared many months in advance, the start of the fiscal year, many changes occur. Finance gathers all of the information from the department heads and puts it together into a consolidated form for the city manager's review. At this point, the city manager and I go through these requests and figure out what the city can afford, and we put them together for your consideration. Start it. I'm going to zip through the first couple of slides while they're working on it. I just want to remind the city council about the city's vision. I put that in here just so you understand that it is related to all things financial as well as the community needs. We also have our mission statement, which you're all familiar with, so I'm not going to read that. Okay.
We have a slight technical problem with the PowerPoint. It'll take us a couple minutes to spool it up.
Okay.
Luckily, we have our IT director to fix it.
I made sure I asked him to come tonight because there's a couple of items on here. If you have a question, I won't be able to answer it.
How long you think? Because we could take a five-minute break.
I would appreciate it.
Okay. Why don't we recess for five minutes until we get the slides back up? Okay? Thank you. Okay, Council. I think we have it up. What, payday?
Yeah.
Okay. Council meeting is back in session.
Okay. So if you're okay, I'm going to continue where I left off.
Please continue.
Okay. So here's the strategic goals and objectives. Those will be addressed on Thursday, and I'm sure they'll be updated. The budget will, for '26, will include your new strategic plan. And so that's just per the city ordinance. So the finance department monitors all of the departments, all their levels of expenditures. We also monitor all of the revenues. We're going to talk about those a little bit tonight. All of the departments are responsible for managing their budgets to their bottom line. That's the way our organization is set up. We have a bottom-line budget. So our mid-year is March 31st, and all of the revenues, mostly the revenues for revenue sharing, and I'll go into detail a little bit later, they're trending slightly behind compared to the same timeframe last year. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to get those revenues. They're just trending slower for whatever reason. So I take the exact same payments from shared revenues from the prior year, compare them to the same timeframe this year, and they're trending about three and a half percent slower. We're continuing to monitor the revenues. I don't see a reason at this point to change them as far as the budget goes. I will monitor them very closely. If something happens that it changes what we need to do, we'll come back to City Council for some changes. I'm sorry. I'm out of breath because I ran up the stairs. It's okay. Like I said, the revenues, mostly the shared revenues, are tracking slightly behind, but the ad valorem revenues are right on track. So I feel really good about that because that is the big bulk of the general fund revenues. All of the departments are managing to the bottom line, so nobody is exorbitant on their budgets. They're all within their approved budgets, and they continue to deliver the outstanding services that the city deserves. The budget will remain balanced after these changes, and I have a brief summary. Sorry, I'm still out of breath. Yeah. Oh, sorry. I can't do two things at once. There we go. I have a brief summary of where those funds are going to come from for you. So I'm going to talk mostly about the general fund. That's the city's main operating fund. It has an amended budget right now of $72,000, or $72,769,275. You can see the actuals on the revenue side are $36 million, almost $37, and that the budget is at 50.8%. Now, I have to, you have to understand, revenues are trending behind, so at 50% of the year, you would think that those revenues would be under 50%. But because we're front-loaded on ad valorem revenues, we get those during the months of November, December, January, February, which is the bulk. So that's what makes us look like the revenues are trending on track. And ad valorem is, but their other revenues aren't, and I'm going to show you why. So the expenditures, the budget is balanced, and the actuals are about $37,730,000, $37 million. So the expenditures are slightly ahead of 50%, but this also includes encumbrances, which is contracted expenses the city has. Okay. So here we are at the shared revenues. This is what I was telling you. They make about 9.3% of the general fund budget. And when I say general fund, shared revenues, these are revenues that were mostly guaranteed through the state. Some of them will lag about two to three months, but they always catch up eventually. We are slightly behind. Last year, the slide had 38% of our revenues received. We're only at 34.5%. But I still believe that we'll be okay. I think there's just a lot of fluctuation in the economy right now, and these will eventually catch up. So here are the proposed amendments to the budget. We're requesting four FTEs for the fire department, three firefighters, and one fire inspector. Those costs will be showed on the next slide. So I'm not going to read all of these. I'm going to pull out a couple of the larger ones. You can see at the top, we have overtime for police and fire. I will let you know that these were deferred to mid-year when we balanced the budget for FY '25. We don't like to front-load all that overtime, so we asked them to come back and look at it again at mid-year. So these amounts were deferred to mid-year, so that's why we're putting them in the budget now. And then you see that, of course, the firefighter and the inspectors, they're in there, and they're at 25%. So they're not even in there at 50% of the year. Looking at the budget, we decided they needed the firefighters. They're going to hire them in July. The general fund continued. The one on this page I want to kind of look at is the city hall chiller. They need additional funds for that. I had to ask what that is. Is it air conditioner? I've never been heard it called quite that before, but that's the other large one. So you can see the grand total for general fund is about $1.5 million. And then here we have the three IT items. The computer-aided design for the Cloud Tyler project, that's for the police department. So that will be paid for through the general fund into the information technology department, and they will have the $151,668 for that project. We have the CRA. This is required by Florida statutes. This is money that they have left over for projects that they've been given through TIF revenues. This year, they have under $100,000, which is really a good number for them. They've spent down their funding, so we have to carry this through. And you can see that they're going to put that money into Trail Town amenities. We also have the marina. They have requested $36,000. That is for operational supplies, tools. Just, I called him and said, "What are you buying with this stuff?" And he needs tools and equipment and supplies and things like cleaning supplies. And so that was a fair number, I thought, because their budget had been scaled back a little bit this year. Then you can see stormwater and solid waste are asking for minimal amounts. And then we have, under the public works, we have the water and sewer resources, a couple of the larger projects, so the backflow preventer project for water field ops and the additional lift station repairs. You can also see that Morning Dove plant needs some repair costs and that they have additional chemicals at $255,000. On the next page, then, we have additional water and sewer resources requests, additional utility costs for water reclamation at $218,000, and blue herring plant repair costs at $118,000. So the total for water and sewer resources is just over $1 million. So here's the breakdown by fund of what they need. I combined all the small funds together, and you'll see that's $225,000. So the grand total is just shy of $3 million for the mid-year adjustments. Do I have any questions up to this point?
Thank you. This is my first time doing this. So with some of these, for example, I know that we discussed the pay for a city manager to hire, you know, a company to find a city manager. But the other items, why didn't those come to us on the consent agenda?
Because these are budget amendments, and normally, we go through this presentation. And for the spirit of transparency, I put every dollar out there.
Okay.
Every dollar that's requested through the mid-year process, I put it into this presentation.
Okay. And thank you for that. Would we be able to have a breakdown a little bit? Because I'm very new at this. When it says $255,000 for chemicals, that's a, I mean, that's a quarter of a million dollars. I would kind of like to know what it is we're buying, and not that I don't trust that it's needed, but some of these things, I'm not, like you are, I'm not aware of what that even is. If you have the breakdown, I would appreciate it.
The breakdown that I was provided from the departments was included in your packet, but I believe that Kevin can answer your chemical questions.
Yeah. So primarily, our lime expense on the Morning Dove is up 11% year-over-year for our contract. Most of our contracts are starting to surcharge everything. They're all being influenced by the variety of economics. Just to give you an idea, we've already spent $400,000 on lime to this point in the year, and we're up 11% on cost. So that's 64% of all of our chemicals are coming through on that one line item right now. Some of the other items, we've got our polymers up about 6%, our ammonia's up 13. These are unnecessary chemicals to operate the plant. So we did conservatively estimate what we'll need for the balance of the year. We're also expecting these chemical costs to continue to rise the rest of the year, going into next year. So I can give you a breakdown more detail if you'd like to see each of the chemicals and what their year lookback was on far as pricing. But none of them really stayed flat. Even our skater software jumped 8% this year.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I don't need that detail. I was just curious of how it worked and if there was more of a breakdown. I didn't see that in the agenda, but perhaps I'm missing that part. I only see the main presentation. Oh, I do see it right here. I'm so sorry. It is here. Thank you.
Amendment, Nelson?
I have a quick question. Looking at the general fund, we're showing overtime benefits for the police and fire. Is that mostly benefits? Because it's like $600,000.
Yeah. No, it's both. It's overtime, and then when you pay that salary overtime, you have to pay the related costs, such as FICA and retirement or whatever might be included in there. So I include it all together because when we build that in our employee benefits package, I have this salary dollar, and then I have to make sure those additional costs are in there. So that's why I put it like that. It's all together.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So, for example, if they get an hour of overtime, we have to pay FICA on that overtime.
Correct. And I get that, but I'm sort of wondering, should we hire extra people as opposed to paying more overtime? And I don't-
Initially, we do have other people that'll be coming into the police department per their request. Right now, it's just a little bit cheaper for retirement and all the added benefits to pay that overtime because they need it.
Okay.
So it runs a little bit cheaper to do it that way, to pay the overtime, because they have to have the staffing.
Okay.
So, but they are asking for more positions.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Amendment, Stokel?
Yes. Just to touch a little bit, especially for Member Mascoso that hasn't gone through this process with us, I think historically, the city manager and we have approved a budget that is very conservative. So typically around this time, we will have a surplus of funds. I can't speak for all of council, but I don't like it when it's such a big amount because I would rather cut taxes. So this, I don't really like this process. I never want to be in a deficit and us be like, "Where do we need to cut?" I would like a little bit of surplus, but to have this much, which, again, you can have different philosophies on that, I just don't feel like that that's a good decision, even to the point where it's not really best practice to hire mid-year. But again, I feel confident that we can do that because we do have such a surplus of funds. The other thing, and I'll take, overtime, I'm not a huge fan of either. I mean, if you just see how much overtime is, I do think that that's something that we need to consider when we start going through this budget process. What does that look like? And not only that, we're about to start union negotiations again, and so keeping that in mind, what does that cost when we start negotiating those things? So I think this is good. This is typically what we do. Do I think that we can improve it? Yes. And I think that these would be good conversations for us to continue to start having as we start going through this process.
Any other questions? Do we have any cards?
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
Oh, we're not, I'm sorry, Stan.
No, I just wanted to, I thought I saw some question faces, so I wanted to ask questions at that point before we went any further.
Just a minute, Stan. She hadn't finished yet. She hasn't finished yet.
Give me another minute. Okay. All right. So I wanted to talk about the FY '25 expenditures as of six months of the year lapsed. Like I said, all of the departments are managing to the bottom line. That's something that I check twice a month to see where we're at with our budget. And I do have to commend them on, they take due care in their budgets. They don't do anything ridiculous that I think that anybody would be concerned if they were to see that cost on their lines. So we have the recommended actions for you. Tonight is to approve the mid-year budgetary change request for the general fund and the other funds that we discussed, and to also authorize the four new FTEs for the Titusville Fire Department. So what I would say is those four new FTEs are at 25% of the year, and they are not, those are reoccurring costs, so we're not allowed to use fund balance for those. Those are coming from projects where there was some budget left over that we were able to, from all of the requests, be able to pull those out and fund those so that they can meet their state requirements. And I have any questions at this point? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead before you do your motion and talk about '26? Yeah. So for FY '26, we got the budget preparation that is already started. The budget preparation, just so you know, is a 10-month process or longer sometimes. And so we will use your new strategic plan that you're getting ready to put together on Thursday, and we will build that into balancing the budget as far as the '26 goes. We've already asked all the departments to supply us with their request for '26, so we're building that now. It will come to you in sometime in late July so that we can put together a tentative trim for the tentative milled for trim. We're also using the lean-six sigma methodology. We're also allocating resources to align with your strategic goals. We're looking at economic development. You saw Nicholas' presentation tonight. I was watching it from my desk. I thought that was really impressive. We're investing in the committed to and committed-to employees' professional growth. I, for one, have a department of all professionals, so I appreciate that the city does that. We also look at employee compensation and benefits. We were instructed to do a 2.5% COLA this year. I think that's fairly competitive. And we're also looking at health insurance plans. Joe monitors those to make sure that our retirees and the current employees are good with all of our health insurance plans. H.R. and finance works together to get those budget numbers prepared for your consideration. And then we're also looking at, we build out a five-year operating budget so that we can kind of see what the trends are doing. And currently, we were instructed to use a 7% or less on the out years for the budget. And then we're also looking at critical staffing needs. So we have quite a number of critical staffing requests that are coming in this year that we'll take a good, hard look at and see where we're at with those. Also, we're looking at the near and midterm critical capital requirements, public safety, public outreach, infrastructure, which is always a big one because it's so costly, roads and streets, utilities, IT. IT is a really big one with all of the threats that we have going on, and of course, public facilities. So we have one of the oldest city hall facilities. I think they do a good job of keeping it going. Some of the areas are a little bit cramped, but we all get along. We're a nice, happy family. So we also maintain the general fund's emergency stabilization reserve fund. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. Right now, it's at $7.5 million. That changes every year. That's money set aside in case we have a catastrophic event so that the city can tap into those resources. So we make sure that that reserve is funded. We also have liabilities for OPEB and debt. The city has a very low debt margin. I'm really proud to say that they have a low debt margin, and that OPEB is funded at 50% of the required contribution every year, and we've maintained that as well. And so I'm on to whatever questions you might have. We have the, what's the next slide? And I forgot to keep going through them. I'm glad you have them on your screen. Okay. So here's the schedule for what's coming up. Like I said, we'll send you a balanced proposed budget at the end of July, and we can do the trim and decide what the milled is going to be. We have the budget workshop on the 7th. I always look forward to that workshop. And then we have the two hearings, which are required by state statute. So now I'm ready for any questions, and you can make your motions.
Okay. Stan, you can come up.
Ms. Butler, when we have a, some kind of a budget workshop, do we have that lady from Cocoa come in? Laurie, something like that? She come in on the budget workshops? Okay, I thought she did. Anyhow, because I went, I went to one of these budget workshops, and I was walking up to talk, and I had two police, three police officers attack me from behind, assaulted me, which was a surprise to me. They didn't give me any warning or anything. I just wondered if that might happen again during the, some kind of a workshop. So anyhow, I want to tell you a story about Mr. Heron. He was the Public Works Director. And he shared an interesting story with me that you should listen to. So he goes, he goes before city manager and he proposes the money that he needs to operate public works. And the city manager comes and says, says to him, he say, "Listen, you've got to cut it down. You got, you can't do that." And so what he's saying to him is saying, "You do what I say, or you're going to get fired." Well, he, he worked here for, I don't know, maybe nine years or something like that, something like that. And he was the longest, I understand, he was the longest public works director. Maybe Kevin got him beaten out. But he was, people came, told me, "Boy, that Jim Heron, how come they don't, they haven't got rid of him?" But he was, he's a good man, and thank you for taking his place, Kevin. So that's a budget issue that, so what we have right now is we have, what I question is a forlog virus problem that was discussed at least two years ago or longer, that is a problem, something that the, the city may, Titusville may be the only city about this size that has the forlog virus problem. It's a secret, a secret, a secret that I discovered from talking with FDEP. So we don't, shouldn't have secrets, and we also should have capital improvement projects for the stormwater management plan that the city has not spent one penny on. I told Mrs. Moscoso. So, right? Okay. So we have not spent any money on drainage easements and drainage improvements and maintenance as required by the stormwater management plan, so we are not sustainable. And I also told you about the Gavin Hurstberg principle that needs to be stopped. It's nonsense. Any questions? Any questions, Terry? No. No. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan.
We also received one additional card. Yes. From Elizabeth Baker. Parker, sorry.
Thank you. As a city, we have a five-year plan for our budget, which is supposed to account for our growth. It's supposed to account for our maintenance. It's supposed to account for our needs as a city as a whole, those that we can anticipate. Obviously, we have things that we cannot anticipate. But I find it kind of shocking that we have over a million dollars in overtime requests for our city. So that tells me that we're not doing a very good job anticipating what our needs of the city are going to be. Now, I come in here almost weekly, or biweekly, to these meetings, and I listen to this council over and over approve development after development after development after development after development, thousands and thousands of new homes, new people, new needs for sewage, new needs for fresh water, new needs for police, new needs for fire. And part of each of those packets, packets that are submitted to the city for approvals are supposed to, is supposed to be, are checking to make sure that we already have in place the utilities, the personnel, and all of the things that these new communities are going to need before we approve them. That's supposed to be part of our plan. Clearly, $3 million, of which most of it should have been accounted for in planning. We are not planning well as a city. We should not be approving thousands of new dwelling units when we can't even support the people and communities that we currently have. I'm disappointed in this city that we aren't making appropriate plans for the future. And we shouldn't be approving hundreds of thousands of dollars of overtime. We should be appropriately planning for and staffing our city. And if we can't do that, we should replace the people who are doing these jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards?
Yes.
No cards.
If I could.
Counsel?
See if city manager would explain impact fees and how much we're allowed to charge.
That'll, that's another agenda item later.
Okay. Then we'll wait.
We'll discuss that.
Any other questions from counsel? Hearing done, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2025 mid-year budgetary change request for the general fund, community redevelopment agency, enterprise, internal fund, and other funds authorize four new FTE positions at 25% and approve the associated budget amendment.
Second.
Has been a motion and second. Are there any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes? Unanimously. Next item is item B.
12B is the State Housing Initiative Ship Local Housing Assistance Plan 2026 to 2028 and resolution, and Terry Franklin's here to explain it again for a second time.
I'm back.
You gonna start where you left off?
Yes, we will.
Ship presentation. L-HAP. So let me catch up. So again, this is to approve the city's three-year plan for the State Housing Initiative Partnership Grant Program, known as SHIP. And I'll just go over briefly the strategies that are included in the L-HAP. Our first strategy is a longstanding strategy that we've had in the plan for many years. It's very utilized by the community. It's our rehabilitation program, which makes minimum housing repairs to owner-occupied homes for very low, low, and moderate income. The maximum assistance level proposed is 80,000, minimum assistance of 10,000. The terms, it's provided in a 0% interest deferred loan, which means the homeowners do not have to make any payments or repay the loan, provided they do not default on the terms. This meets the 75% and 65% set aside requirements per the SHIP statute. Strategy B is a weatherization program, which is pretty much the same as the rehab, except this is limited to the exterior of homes to make them more energy efficient and sustainable to Florida weather. Maximum 50%, minimum 5%. Again, it meets the 75% and 65% set aside requirements. First-time home buyer program, again, for the next three years. We currently have this program. We're looking to increase the maximum assistance levels and include this next cycle to include with repairs. The program has only been down payment assistance for the, in the past. We're seeing more and more homes that require repairs to pass inspection to be able to be bought. So this cycle, we would like to include, to include repairs. This will meet the 65% set aside requirement for homeownership. SHIP statute requires that each city have a disaster recovery program in the L-HAP, so we do have that included. And then strategy E would be a new strategy for the next three years. This will be rental rehab. This will be to repair rental properties that are considered affordable units for very low and low income, maximum 50,000 per unit. This would be a term of 10 years, a repayable loan, so these monies would go back into the program to continue to provide additional assistance. The maximum for the rental is 25% of the grant, so there would be some criteria for us to monitor that, to make sure we don't exceed that set aside. Additionally, we have another strategy, new construction program. This would be new for the next three-year cycle. This takes into consideration the lots that are being donated by the city to our community housing development organizations, our community land trust, and this will provide down payment assistance to those developers so they can sell those homes to low-income households. And the L-HAP again outlines the administrative functions of the L-HAP, which is 10% of the grant. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay. City clerk, do we have any cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the SHIP L-HAP with associated resolution number 10 dash 2025 and approve the associated budget amendment.
I'll second.
Moved and second, questions? All in favor, aye?
We have to have a roll call.
Oh. Roll call vote, I knew that.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes. Proved unanimously. Okay. On to item C, advisability to amend the fence permit regulations.
We have Brad Parrish will advise counsel on this advisability and receive direction regarding our intent to amend the fence permit requirements and to make them more clear and understandable.
With me, I have building official Steve Adams to help answer any questions. On page 586 of your packet is the report to you describing this request. Basically, the code is currently written, applicants are compelled to demonstrate or prove the proposed fence work is below 50% in order to avoid permitting 50% of the threshold of the size of the, or value of the fence. The 50% rule has proven to be difficult to administer as it is often subjective and misleading. Furthermore, applicants often deploy this rule to make fence repairs replacements where the existing configuration may not necessarily be consistent with the regulations. As in other cases of existing nonconformity, the city would prefer to avoid encouraging improvements that prolong or increase nonconformities. And so we've enclosed to you some proposed language, and with your direction, we would propose this in an ordinance for approval. It's on page 588 of your packet. You'll see the existing language, current code, section 6 dash 56C, which talks about, describes that 50% rule. And the proposed language into the same section would basically state the following, shall be lawful to construct or erect any new fence or wall without first obtaining a building, a permit from the building department. Any repair replacement of an existing fence shall not require a permit from the department if a record of permit exists for the original construction. Any repair replacement of an existing permitted fence shall maintain consistency with the originally approved permit on record, which is consistent with code. And so generally, this is the language we would like to propose to you, and with your direction, we'll come back to you with an ordinance. And again, the main purpose of this is to provide, is to reduce confusion and to streamline efforts.
Okay. Any questions from counsel?
Yes, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So our current code, code says that you need a permit to build a new fence or to do major repairs. So stop me if I'm wrong on any of this. You, if you repair or replace more than 50% of a fence, it's treated like a new construction. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then the new proposed updated code would say permits are always required for building a new fence, making alterations to a fence, even if it has a permit?
No.
No, okay. And then repairs or replacements do not require a permit only if the original fence has a permit on file. So that's where I'm a little bit confused. Do we think people are going to, I mean, my neighborhood, I live in Royal Oak, it was built in 67. I haven't checked to see if my fence has a permit on file. Is that something we're going to expect people to do before they replace it? And, and I'm just going to give you the example. I have one, both of my neighbors have put up new fence, and then my fence is quite old. I don't know how, what would be 50%? I don't know if that is, if I'm just an average citizen, I probably would, if, if half of it fell down, I'd probably just go ahead and, and put it up. Would that be against code to do that, if it's a third of a fence?
It, it, potentially, it could be.
Okay.
As the code is written today.
Okay.
And again, counsel gave us direction to find low-hanging fruit to improve our ordinances. To me, this is a less adversarial ordinance to our residents. So to explain the, the record, ultimately, what we're trying to do is see fewer requirements for applicants to approach. So the fence that you described at your home, if it was permitted, we have a record of it. We've already reviewed it for code compliance. We've inspected it. We've closed the record. It's in the file. The way the new ordinance is drafted, there, there would be no reason for you to come back to the building department if that fence fell down.
Okay.
To, to permit it as it was.
Perfect.
So once a fence has been permitted, approved, then that resident gets to keep it, maintain it, repair it, until something changes. Obviously, if they want to change it to a different material or a different configuration, then we would update the record with a new permit. But as long as there's a record on file of an approved configuration, I see no need for that resident to have to come back when it blows down.
Okay, wonderful. That's exactly, I just don't want there to be extra regulations on this. I want to make it as easy as possible for our residents to fix their fences and things like that. So thank you very much.
Agreed, 100%.
Thank you.
You sure?
Yeah.
Any other questions? No more cards?
We have two cards.
Oh, we have two cards? Okay.
Elizabeth Parker.
I just had a quick question. I do like the idea that we are no longer going to require permits for replacing fences that already were permitted. But I did have a question about how this is written with regard to change in fence material. So if, I just was wondering if I could get clarification. Let's say the homeowner had a pine fence and replaced it with cedar panels. Is that considered a change that would require a permit?
No. We would consider both wood fences.
Okay. And then the only other question I had was how does the citizen find out if, particularly, I, I agree, I live in Royal Oak, and my fence is probably permitted 20 years ago. How would I find my permit?
Certainly. A, a simple records request could solve that. The citizen could, could contact the building department to look in the file, the property address file, to see if there has ever been an approved fence project on that property. And if not, we would ask that that resident come and make application for their new fence, right? And now we have it on file, they get to keep it.
Okay. And then the other question I had was consistent with current code, but then I read something about setbacks. Are there, is there new code with regard to setbacks that's going to change where your fence can live?
So that, that's the only exception that we found is, for the most part, fence ordinance hasn't changed in the past 50 years, with the exception of side corner setbacks. So somewhat recently, I would say five to seven years ago, we So somewhat recently, I would say five to seven years ago, we adopted a side corner setback. So normally, your fence could be six feet high, all the way up to the first 25 feet of the front setback on a typical R1B neighborhood. On a side corner, we brought that back to 30 feet, six-foot-high max. So that's the only difference. So to your example, if there is a fence that was permitted 30 years ago, however, it's six-foot-high in that side corner setback, we would ask for an update to the permit in that record file to see that is dropped down to four feet, or brought back to the 30-foot setback.
And so that's along the front of the property, front of the home?
Only on side corner properties.
So if it's a property with a neighbor on either side, then it doesn't apply?
No change.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the last card is Dan Johnston.
I did read this, what has been put in the agenda packet before, before this meeting. And I, I'm concerned about a situation right now with a fence that the city doesn't respond to. And I don't want to go a lot into it, but I think you should see it, is that it's a property that my wife and I used to own, and y'all have heard of Mockingbird Lane. So Mockingbird Lane used to be a two-way path, it's changed into a one-way path. And the concrete pad was approved by my wife and I as we were, when we were owners of the property. So the city put in the concrete pad, paved our street, Elizabeth Avenue and Whispering Hills Road, added all kinds of improvements, sidewalk and everything else, at no expense to me. In fact, they even bought part of my property, or our property. And, and so now what we have is where my wife and I approved this concrete apron, 20 feet wide, it's still 20 feet wide, you measure from the corner, let's say the left-hand corner, over nine feet, there's a fence. It's like almost right in the middle of the road. I think y'all should see it. It's unbelievable. I've called the fire department, the police department, they said, oh, they're not worried about it. It's going to be an accident at some time. So I'm requesting you to, to take a look at it because it's, it's complete nonsense the city has approved. If the city is working with fences, they ought to, they ought to do something with this. And I've already reported it. Nothing's being done except saying it's okay, except for Mr. Tolson. He said he can't review it because it, it hasn't had final acceptance. But that's what, that's what, I got all my plans right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Any other cards? No other cards. Okay, we'll move on for approval.
Move to approve the advisability and direct, and direct staff to amend the fence permit requirements.
Second.
Moved and second, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes? So move.
The next item on 12D is the natural resources report. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I'm not going to go through every slide, I'll go through it quickly. Just to give you some background, this started a few years ago when we did, we, the Titusville Tomorrow Project. Long story short, council decided not to go forward with that comprehensive plan, but you gave us direction to make proposed comprehensive plan amendments that were acceptable from that draft plan to be incorporated into our current plan. And one part of that recommendation, or that direction from you, was to address environmental policies. When we looked into that, we worked with Inspired Place Making Collective, which is located over Orlando, one of our continuing contracts, and they suggested we do a report with a public engagement portion. So that's what this is, it's a summary of that effort the past year, working with the public and working with T E C. So the purpose of the report was, I'll, I'll describe briefly the purpose, project schedule, and website that was involved in the engagement results and the final report. The purpose of it was to understand the community's concerns and goals related to natural resources, recommend strategies to update the conservation and coastal management elements of the comprehensive plan. But ultimately, this report included additional recommendations that are more programmatic and more, and capital-related. The project schedule started in March 2024. We had T E C individual interviews in April of that year, open, there was an open house with the community. There was a separate T E C workshop in June, and a second workshop with them in September 11th, and a final report presented to them in, later that, that same month, rather, at that workshop. There was also a website where the public could provide input. Lots of responses, a lot of engagement there. The questions such as, do you think the city does enough to sufficiently protect natural resources, and received responses to that, and many other questions related to the survey. Top initiatives of the city should prioritize protect natural resources. Some of the main things that came up out of that effort was conservation of land and wildlife and habitat acquisition, improving treatment and disposal of wastewater effluent, wetland protection, tree preservation and protection, and of course, low-impact development Some of the, another engagement question, should the city provide more stringent wetland protection regulations in St. John's? Of course, there was overwhelming response that we should. Police list in order of importance, the natural resources projects, programs the city should prioritize funding in the next 10 to 20 years. And so there are a variety of responses there, but probably the most, the top one was related to the Indian River Lagoon. So the report is divided into five major areas, water quality in Indian River Lagoon, land acquisition and conservation, aging infrastructure, tree canopy preservation, wetland and floodplain regulations. There are several, in each section, you'll see several recommended strategies. And you'll see the report on page 605 of your packet, but the meat of it really starts in 621 of your packet. And you'll see the list of recommendations. Recommended strategies, consider, or considerations include advancing the I R O projects, aging wastewater infrastructure aggressively seeking funding, land acquisition, tree preservation, and landscaping and wetlands. That ends the presentation, but I do want to just point you on page 621 of your packet, just to show you an example, and to understand how this report is organized. You'll see a first strategy on that page, and it says specifically, continue to prioritize funding and seek grant funding for projects that improve water quality of the Indian River Lagoon. And then underneath it, you'll see a category, it says IMP or SAP. So above that, on that table, that matrix, you'll see how each of these recommendations or these strategies are categorized and how they can be implemented. Either as, specifically as a comprehensive plan amendment, a capital improvement project, a land development regulation amendment, helping implement an action from the sustainability action plan, maybe a public relations effort. We did include and work with the consultant and with T E C on adding additional columns here, and I'll briefly describe what these mean. The next column says implementation. We put comment about how that particular strategy could be implemented. Future considerations and resources, this was for us to inform you and to the public whether there may be a pro or con on any one of these recommendations, or constraint such as funding, or whether it might be something that's low-hanging fruit, whatever there might be. So it's a general comment from staff. Comprehensive plan policy, so we've included a policy that this particular strategy may be specifically related to helping implement. And also the sustainability action plan, so we've included the specific strategy from that plan that this recommendation may be specifically helping implement, to implement. So there's several pages after that, you'll see how this, the, the recommendations are categorized or structured into these five themes. Each recommendation is structured similarly. Some were broad, some were very specific. We did emphasize to T E C that this is not, this is basically just a, a, a plan of action of how to go forward in the next 10 or 20 years. It's, or more, it's basically something that they can look at, prioritize, this is, and select maybe one or two of these out of each year, or maybe a handful, depending on how they're related. Ask your permission if this is something that you think is important to prioritize. So just like any recommendation that comes from T E C, it has to come to you to approve that recommendation in order to utilize any staff resources. So this is not a plan of action given to T E C to go forward with. They still have to consider what is important, ask your recommendation, and you approve that recommendation, just like any other action that they give you. So with you on this agenda, on, on the report to you, we've put in there a recommendation to accept the report. We will take this, if you approve it, as basically a guide to, to the T E C to work with, no different than a plan that the historic preservation board has, or the CRA utilizes for their plan. So with that, I'll turn to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from counsel? Do we have any cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
You know what this is? You know what this is? Something y'all don't want to see, something y'all don't want to recognize. Stan Johnston, I'm against this 12D. First of all, it says public engagement. Well, there's, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see public engagement in the city of Titusville. I see closed doors, not answering phone calls, not responding to, to emails. There's not public engagement. Why should I go there when, for example, back in 1987, I repeatedly told the city of Titusville that there's no, that this Guyven Hirsberg principle does not apply to the city of Titusville? That's a long time ago. Long time ago, 1987. And, and so, so in 1986, or 85, they adopted a plan to construct dams. Now you guys took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States. These dams take property without due process of law. You're breaking law, you're breaking our constitution, you're violating your oath. Now regarding the Guyven Hirsberg principle, which I told you about already today when I was comparing it to an iceberg, the, the dams are illegal, that's from the thing, and they proposed to ban dams back in about 1985. The first I saw a dam built was 2008. And I was, I just threw my hands up in the air, what can I do? So I waited 2012, when FEMA said they were going to do some studies. And so the city of Titusville lied to FEMA repeatedly, dishonestly, lied to FEMA about what's going on here. And it's still going on, right now, today. The city of Titusville doesn't have, in other words, this, this right here is, I disapprove of it for many reasons. It's a, it's a sham, it's a hoax. You guys aren't listening. There's not public engagement when I as a professional engineer tell you what the problems are, and you don't respond. That's the way you go. So what we have here is a loyalty network, which I told you about before. The city of Titusville has a loyalty network. Their loyalty is to who? The city. It should be, their loyalty to, should be to the public. It's not. And what I'm talking about, Mr., Mr. Broome, he sold himself to the devil. Sold himself to the devil. I think some of you, maybe y'all have also, some other people have done that in this room. Thank you.
Any other cards? Anything else from counsel? Yes, ma'am.
Move to review and accept the natural resources report and recommended strategies.
Moved and second. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes? So move. E, police, fire, city hall, and public works impact fee study.
Yes, sir, this is a, a recommended action is to improve the impact fee study for police, fire, and city hall public works impact fees, and provide direction for implementation as outlined in the presentation. As you are aware, we periodically review the impact fees to ensure that new development pays for capital increases and those disciplines. And this is the first step, is to approve the impact fee study, and then we'll come back with two public hearings to implement the fees as counsel directs. And Kevin Cook is here to explain some of the details of the study.
Okay. So as Sam mentioned, this is the companion to the water sewer connection fees that you saw a couple of meetings ago. This is police, fire, city hall, and public works. Police and fire updated in 2019. You cannot update a increased impact fee except for a four-year window, so this is the timing for those two. I'm just going to go through the existing proposed impact fees, the study's been attached in the agenda, going through some of the calculation, implementation, and next steps. So starting with the kind of overview, we are proposing that the police impact fee will reduce for a single family by approximately 7%. Fire, city hall, and public works will all be increasing, ranging from 26% at fire to nearly 50% at city hall. Likewise, on the commercial, the lower chart, police goes down 9%, city hall public works are capped at 50% increases, and fire is a 44% increase. A lot of that is just mathematical, because city hall is at 1 cent. Statutory says you can only go up 50% in a four-year window, so it's going to be spread out over time. Just some details on the PD side. I did ask consultant about the anomaly that this fee did go down. There were some statutory changes that exclude, if you look at the first line, although PD has 15 million in current assets, they have to exclude machinery and equipment from that due to statute change that takes out all short-term machinery and equipment from the impact fee calculation. The other facet of why it went down was the city's current staffing is 1.85 officers per capita, per thousand. Our goal is 2.4. Because we are not staffed at the goal, we cannot count those new positions and the capital for them, as that would be making up a deficiency. Impact fees cannot make up deficiencies, they have to be used for growth.
Kevin, I hate to interrupt you a minute, but we're going to need a motion to extend city council meeting.
Move to extend to 11 o'clock.
Reluctantly, right? Moved and second.
Kevin, talk fast.
Oh, I can, I can talk fast.
Questions?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So move.
Proceed, Kevin. Okay. But yeah, just wanted to touch mainly on PD because they did have the reduction in theirs. It can be something we can address in the future once the staffing levels are called up, and the future growth will catch up in, in that same regard. The next slide was simply their C I P plan. Again, they, there are some, some items they can, that we cannot include in the study. We also do not have a commitment for a new facility, which is the, you know, 60 to 80 million dollar commitment that's in our out years. If that comes in, that will also factor into future impact fee calculations. Just give you a summary of capital cost per officer, about 140,000 is what it does cost outfit, an officer on the capital side. Giving you the comparison, we do slide back a little bit below the average line. Our consultant did like to stress that the impact fees are local impact fees, so comparing them is simply a comparison for reference. We cannot, we can't really use market as reasoning for adjustments, it has to be a local calculated item. Some of the community, some of the counties on this do not charge an impact fee for their police side. Same thing for fire rescue, some, they get to count more of their assets into theirs so they don't lose as many as it moves over from left to right on this chart. Their capital improvement plan does incorporate the need for future stations as expanding systems do take an effect. Fire will be coming forward with some plans for additional station in the future. And then the cost per firefighter is $169,000 to outfit facility vehicles and equipment per firefighter, and that calculates into their fees. Likewise, this is the comparison they have sliding up. Again, their calculation on, for instance, the commercial side was a 200% increase that is capped at 50% for the statutory restriction. Moving on to city hall, this existing city hall assets around $2 million. Capital improvement, continuing improvements to this facility is around 1.5 in the future, but they're not included because this building is essentially, you know, peaked out. but they're not included because this building is essentially, you know, peaked out at this point. So, we do have an inventory of existing capital costs that is in our calculation. Future, sorry, this is public works. Our existing capital assets, about 700,000. We do have funded capital improvement plans that allow us to incorporate that into the impact fee for public works, around about 4.7 million. This comparison is obviously much smaller, that the city hall is not a common impact fee, so there's not a lot of comparables out there. This is all combined, excluding water sewer connection fees, is combined for the municipal impact fees, kind of comparison for our peers, landing almost exactly on the, the average for all our peers. And then, like I touched on, those that are capped at the 50%, we have to implement over a four-year cycle. So, this is their implementation plan. The police department will implement in year one fully. The others will implement over a four-year cycle. Well, you'll see in the proposed ordinances, we are proposing that to happen on October 1st, to coincide with our fiscal year changes, when all our rates change helps out with everyone for the collection side. And then, next steps, we do have these planned to come back to you the next two meetings, coinciding with the water sewer connection fee updates as well. So, you'll see all the impact fee ordinances being updated together at one time, with some changes in the terminology within the ordinances as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
I'm complimenting this guy in the back of the corner. He did a fantastic job of explaining the, the speed violations in school zones. And I want you to know is that years ago, police officers and fire officers, I wanted to be a fireman at one time, they were my heroes, like Lone Ranger and Tonto. They were good, they're good guys. And I can't say that today for all of them.
You're talking about impact fees, okay, Stan?
Exactly. I think they need to be educated. Impact fees, they should be, if anything, you ought to educate them, because right now is that they're not, as far as I can see, as if I were a fireman, I wouldn't do what they're doing right now. I just wouldn't do it. I think we're getting the short end of the stick, is what I'm saying. So, the short end of the stick in this case is like I told you about, the fence in the middle of the road. The...
Stan, bring this back to impact fees for me.
And this is, so, I don't think we should have impact fees, because we need to educate them, is the first thing they ought to do.
Huh? Clock's not on.
What happened?
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So, they should have, and, and, and what is the horrible thing, is something that everybody approves here, except Mrs. Moscoso, and that is the spraying of women, children, and babies with sewage. And this is, this is, this is the only city in the world that does that.
Impact fees, Stan.
So, so I'm, I'm against giving them any impact fees until they're educated to know what, what they're supposed to do. Because this is, this is horrible. They're good men, and they're not doing the right thing.
Stan, this is an impact fee study to determine how much to charge residents based on our police-fire and public works.
We should, we should reduce them, because they're not doing the right thing.
He just said they were reducing.
More, because, I mean, I mean, I got, it's crazy what's going on. I get arrested for doing nothing. They don't even tell me what I'm arrested for. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Any other cards? No cards? Anything else?
Yes. Um, yes. Question. So, um, are we, so we had to do the study, I'm assuming that was a requirement. Are we allowed to raise them higher than what the study proposes by statute?
No.
Okay.
They're capped it.
So, we have to go for that. Okay. Now, going back to the officer, we had to do it at the 1.85. This 2 point, I think it was 2.4. Is that, so you said we could come back when we actually meet that criteria, but do we have to wait four years then, now, to be able to get what we? My issue is, I want to be charging the appropriate impact fee to whoever's doing the impact, not to our current residents. And so, how can we, I guess, fix that? Legally? Legally?
I guess the initial fix is that P D would have to be staffed up to 2.4, which I know they do propose officers, I'm sure, in the 26 budget.
But that's going to be too late if we're going to propose, unless we, the timing happens, but the study's already done. So, that's where I'm like, what, what can we do?
Under, under the statute, you have to adopt it within a year when the study began, and it must be based on the local data. And they also restrict our ability to increase, as you heard, 50% over four years. So, those are just statutory requirements.
So, we're just tied right now with these rates, is what I'm hearing. There's nothing we can do, because this is what the study came back with.
Right. You can't base them on some arbitrary number. It has to be based on the local data through the study. And it has to be adopted within a year of the study, because they want it to be recent data.
Even though we recognize we will need more officers, and we plan to staff more officers, and we, current residents will be paying primarily more for that than potentially the impact fees would be paying.
And I don't see us getting to 2.4 anytime soon. We're scheduled to ask for another four as part of F I 26.
Okay.
So, we are between 1.85 and 2.4, probably around 2.2.
Okay.
So, it's going to be a few more years till we get to 2.4.
Okay. And the study's doing it based on what we currently have, which is the 1.8. Okay. Yeah. I guess I just want to make sure, if there's things that we can do, to make sure that the, who's funding this, it's proportioned appropriately. And that's kind of where, I don't know what we can do legally, and so that, that concerns me a little bit, especially as we're going into the budget process.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve the impact fee study for police-fire, city hall, and public works impact fees. Do we need direction?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Provide direction for implementation as outlined in the presentation.
Second?
Moved and second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposeds? So move. Petitions and requests from the public. You've been waiting patiently, haven't you?
I am here. Okay. Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, you know me anyhow. And I just want you to know, I'll do my best to be quick and clear. However, at 10 o'clock at night, my phone tells me I'm supposed to be in bed, so...
Mine told me that at 10:15.
There you go. Anyhow, I just want to discuss briefly the vote on the B A A ordinance, because I think there are just important things I want to say. The reality is, we're not talking about an even playing field. The developers have many more resources to hire lawyers. So, if a law happens to be reported in a meeting, it's much more likely to be the opinion of the developers, because they're the ones that get to pay them. And the B A A themselves have no lawyers to interpret that. And member Nelson, I'll spick on you a little bit. It's a long time since you got your law degree, as a long time since I got my doctorate. But you might recall that in law school, a lot of times, students are assigned to argue one side of a case, and then they'd argue the other side of the case, always. Right. And so, the thing is, the lawyers who get paid a lot of money are being told just to argue one side of the case, and that's why you hear all the things that are correct. And I'm going to talk briefly of standing in not long. It's no surprise that the developer's lawyer spoke against it. After all, they don't want us to have standing, and actually, at one point, I heard him say, well, he didn't think anybody had standing. Yet Dwight Severs, who came to the next meeting, he couldn't come to the first one, and we can't afford to pay him to come, a lawyer when he can't, argued the other side of that, and actually made a very important point that said, when you're talking about the comprehensive plan, and it has an effect on that, actually, any citizen in the city has standing for those. And that was what this discussion was. So, it's just not a fair argument, when the developers are the ones that have the money and the citizens don't. And, and, Councilwoman Nelson seemed getting tired. Watch the rest of that B A A meeting, because I think how the citizens were treated was so abhorrent, and you probably didn't get to all of that part. It was really bad. At the end, it was really bad. Anyhow, and you can see how well Mr. Taylor eats while people are talking to him face-to-face. It was very rude. Anyhow, okay, so, I'm disappointed, you know that, but I wanted to share that. Now, I'm going to quickly try to say something on a totally different issue. At least three minutes is a killer.
You got 30 seconds.
But the F D L E report on the shooting of Mr. Charles is very delayed from what we were told. And that leads to an awful lot of mistrust in the city. And so, what I'd like to suggest to you all is see if someone can contact F D L E and find out when this report might be available, and give that information to the citizens. I think it would go a long way to restoring some trust. Okay? That's it. Good night.
I've got a couple of things to, to say to what you said.
Okay.
And one is, on the F D L E, Chief Lau has contacted F D L E every week. On yesterday, he talked to Samantha.
Uh-huh.
And he explained to her that she would be the first to know. I, I totally agree with you that it's taken an inordinate amount of time.
Like, as he said originally, and I'm, I mean, it's all a guess, but he said four to six weeks.
That's what we thought.
And I know.
I have even contacted Sheriff Wayne Ivey to see if he could do anything to get it off of dead center.
I wish, I just wish we could say something.
If you have a crystal ball, we would be able to tell. On your first point about the B A A, we're going to watch that, okay? And just because it ended up in a tutu tonight, does not necessarily mean if we recognize that we do have a major problem there, we will look at it again. I mean, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, because I really do think it's so inherently unfair, because it has to do with who has the money. And, and I want to say one other thing tonight, really, because part of this meeting has been a pleasure, because people come up and talk to you, and you talk back to us, and we don't hear any of this, you know, could you please give me another so-and-so long time? I mean, I feel more heard tonight than I have heard ever since Mr. Connors found his way into the mayoral chair. I mean, it's really, and I appreciate that respect, and I want to say that. And I might not agree with your opinions, we're not always going to agree, but it's nice to feel that you treated me with respect, and I intend to treat all of you with respect, as you know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and sleep well.
We will. Okay. Any more petitions and requests? Are you threatening to get out?
He's already, he already has.
Oh, he already did. See my mind? You see? You see what you're doing to me, Stan? Thank you. Okay, now, we go to our mayor and council reports. The council have anything? Anyone have anything they would like to?
Yes. I'll try to be brief. I do have a few items, though, that I would like to try to run through. One, I mentioned it briefly earlier, there's two scholarship opportunities. I did just send them over to our city manager to see if he could send it out to all of our staff. So, if you know anybody, those are two great opportunities for scholarships with a quick turnaround time. The other thing that, and member Moscoso kind of brought it up earlier a little bit with the D R C, I've been thinking about, it would be nice if we could potentially get a presentation, and I don't know what this would look like exactly, but specifically on commercial properties, we don't really, we're not part of the inner working, so if an applicant, I came in and I wanted to potentially build something on a commercial property, I submitted it to, I don't need to come to council, I go through staff, and I realize the landscaping requirements are too strict, and I have that preliminary meeting, and then I go away. We don't get to see that kind of conversation, and to me, that would be helpful if there's some type of information session that we can get regarding those applications that have gone away, what were those primary reasons? So, if we do need to potentially adjust our code, that would be something, we don't know what we don't know. So, right now, we could think they're great, but if they're turning away, or they're having these pre-meetings, and then they go away, just because I'd like to see our commercial properties being developed. And then, that kind of ties into the D R C, what kind of information's happening in those? What, what are we seeing consistently, you know, being barriers that they're meeting about? I think that might just be beneficial for us as we're potentially planning. So, I don't know if that's an advisability. Does that make sense?
I'd like to respond to that. We have two advisabilities from you right now, past decisions of council, to come to you with recommendations on making things easier in the code. We have that already. So, we, like, example tonight, the fence was one, so we continue to do that. The other is, we already have direction from you to come back to you. If you remember a few meetings ago, I gave you some, a recommendation, a strategy of how we can make the site development process a little easier, especially since it takes so long for each review to be completed, and we gave you some strategies, and you responded back that we should go forward with the recommendations that we came up with. So, there's a variety of changes, we're going to go back to you. One is evaluating our parking requirements, and what really needs to go before the D R C or not. The low-impact development ordinance.
Yeah.
We've also evaluating our staffing, so we're going to put in a request for an additional staff member for engineering review as part of the fiscal year 26 budget, things of that nature. So, we're going to come back to you, and each one would be a, an action for you to consider.
Okay. So, I think those three things that you just said kind of incorporate what I was trying to, okay, thank you. The other thing was, for our, I don't think we've had the R F P go out for that foreclosure process that was mentioned with our previous city manager, so I just wanted to see...
We have it in a draft form. It's not ready yet, but...
Perfect. Okay. So, I just wanted to follow...
It's 99% done.
Okay. Perfect. And then, lastly, is a request of council. They recently just opened up the registration for National League of Cities, and I would like to request to attend that conference again, as I did last year. But that was, would need a vote and approval to attend that.
Okay. If we have a vote on that, Richard, do we have to take cards on it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. I didn't think your name was Richard. You changed your name on me? Okay. Okay. I, okay. So, I'm, I'm not going to ask you to put, you want to talk on that at all? You don't have to put in a card. We're going to vote on this. Anybody that wants to, it's only three people here. You got a card on that vote?
Esther.
Yes, he puts on his card anything that you vote on.
Oh, okay. Well...
So, this is to attend the National League of Cities Conference.
Come talk, if you want to. You can say you like it.
I'll make a motion, and I'll pack something.
All right. Okay. Make the motion.
Well, yeah, I'd feel more comfortable.
Where is it? How much, how much is it?
So, it's in Utah. It would be, I don't know the exact cost, but it would be the registration, the flight, and the hotel. I believe we do have council funds for council budgeted for this, as I attended last year. So, when I talked to previous city manager, we do have a fund for city council.
Do we all get to go?
I, I would say, I mean, we do have the funds, and I, as you know, I push, and I'm glad, you know, member Moscoso's attending.
So, you're going in the winter, so you can ski?
It's, no, I don't think there'll be skiing. It will be in like, yes. Yes. But, and I would like, in all honesty, I will tell you, sometimes I'm, I have consistently been at these conferences by myself in the past. Member Moscoso, Mayor Connors attended the Legislative Action Days. If anybody would want to attend this, I would highly encourage it. I feel like it really does help and benefit our city, so I, I do think that we have typically council funds, so that would be definitely...
So, would we need a motion for advisability to bring it back?
I don't...
Before us?
When is it?
I don't think so. It's in November. But typically, we just do motion to approve, like, motion to approve sending a council member to said conference.
We certainly have the funds available. If council directs, we can make it happen.
Yeah.
Motion to approve sending member Stokel to said conference.
Said?
Said. Said.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
So moved and second. Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes? Nay! No, yes.
And I would encourage anybody else to really attend, if you guys can. I do think it would be beneficial.
All right, thank you. Any council members, your lights on?
My light's on, yes. So, talking to Dr. O'Rourke about BAA, she brought up a good point, that maybe we need to look at expanding the expertise categories for BAA. Maybe include somebody who has an environmental background, an attorney. We had an attorney on the board, she was great. She became a judge, we lost her. So I would like to see us request advisability for changing that ordinance to expand the professions that can be on that.
Okay, while I just, while I agree with that totally, what happens if we can't, you know, like, we have problems filling boards anyway. What happens if we, say we need an attorney, and we can't get an attorney, but we've got somebody that's good? How, I'm not sure how we approach that.
It's A, B, C, D, or E here.
Okay.
So it says the members of the board should have these kind of backgrounds.
So I can be on the board, if I'm an architect?
Yeah, yeah. So it's A, B, C, or E.
Okay, okay, okay.
You have to.
Make a motion.
So that would be my motion.
Okay, wait a minute, hold on. Stan, you want to say anything? Anybody want to say anything about the motion?
Say something.
Say it. Thank you.
Okay, that would be my motion, that we, we look at the makeup of the BAA and include somebody with these disciplines, attorney, or somebody with an environmental science kind of background.
Okay. Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes, so move.
So I'm not done.
Okay, one.
No.
Okay.
Three.
Three, okay.
Three. So since the zone is gone, my question to Mr. Abate at lunch today was, should we do an MOU kind of thing where we have those TIF funds and we're directing them? So he assured me that Mr. Brim had all the answers.
Well, I did ask him to be prepared to answer that, but it's, there's no easy answer. We have to do a lot of research and get the proper processes in place, but Richard can detail that a little bit better than I can.
Correct, the arrangement now, you know, we have a TIF, and the county has their TIF, and per our agreement, the TIF money from the zone that we collect goes into the north part economic development zone at the county to be used under their grant programs. As you know, they have the district, they have their grant programs. We do not have identified particular grant programs that they, like they have, and how they would qualify, and how we're going to judge the applications. So directly, yes, we do have that money, but right now, it's not set up to do the grants the way they, they do them. So it would require some modifications, in my opinion, and you have to decide or reset up to do that. Is that something you want to continue or not?
I don't know.
I don't know that the county's voted.
I don't know.
I don't know the status of the zone at the county. I know that there was some approval to move forward with that. But certainly, we could, we could research anything this council would like us to research, and come back with that information in whatever direction you want to go.
If you don't mind, I would like to have some kind of research, some kind of report back on that.
We probably need a motion, because it's going to probably take more than two hours to do that, right?
No, what exactly do you want us to research?
What our options are, what it would take to monitor, direct, manage the funds ourselves.
Okay, and again, you, the way it's done now, and not only manage them, but we want to see, now you have funds that are being utilized for a couple of projects that have been approved, the mall, sewer line. So what funds are dedicated to that?
I think probably the easiest thing for me would be to sit down with you and spend a half an hour, let's.
Certainly, got three weeks to do that, yeah.
Yeah, I have three weeks, okay, okay.
No, certainly, we can sit down and go through that, and go over the ordinances with you. And in the current locals, we have the county, get somebody where the county's at, because like I said, even if they don't, they still have to fund the projects that have already been approved. And look at those accountings, what dollars are left, what do you have to utilize at this point? Then you're going to have to look at forecasting what monies are going to be coming into this TIF in the future, to realize what monies you do have available for any particular grant program, so.
Let me do that.
Or does council want to continue with it?
Let me do this. I'll bet if I sit down with you sometime next week, and let's think about it.
Absolutely.
And the third thing, question I had is, Airbnbs, do we want to relook at it?
Yeah, I would, I'll be honest, I was kind of taken back a little bit by that discussion, just because I, or that citizen, because I don't know, I didn't know the specifics on that. I will tell you, from the standpoint with like the Florida Lega Cities, and there's been a lot in the past where there's been push from the state to kind of strip all regulations, I believe, and Brad can probably speak to this more so than I can, I think we're, we're grandfathered in, per the state statute, where we have our rules. And from my understanding, until I heard this citizen in the past eight years of being up here, our, our approach has primarily been that we want to make sure we have the checks in place, should there be an issue, that we, you know, don't have a neighborhood that we have a bunch of families going into, and then this house that just keeps changing out, that we have enough protection there to, if we needed to enforce it, we could, but we are not proactively trying to do like a gotcha, we, we know they're there, but are that, is that, would that be correct, Brad?
It would be a fair assessment. Just be aware of that, any change to that regulation loses that grandfathering.
That, that's what I was concerned about, yeah, that was the other aspect.
If we changed part of the.
We lose the grandfather.
Yes.
Everything swaps.
Yeah, that, that, that is what makes it very sticky, so. I think maybe we look at it to see what the issue, because I don't know, I guess she was sent something from Airbnb to let her know, you have not done what you're supposed to do, and I don't know. And I guess she hadn't registered with us, and my guess, based on where she lives, she doesn't qualify to be officially registered, would be my guess.
Correct, there's several zoning districts specifically identified in the code that are restricted to rentals of four units, four times a year. So that's the max, in some zoning districts.
Okay.
That's primarily our single-family zoning districts.
Single family.
I'd sort of like to relook at it. I mean, I feel comfortable with the Airbnb, because any time I go with the kids, they make me go to an Airbnb.
You say that, but I'll tell you right now, we will lose our grandfathering, and I think the restrictions of what would be allowed might be more than you would want, potentially. So you can, I would say you can definitely look at it, but I feel like.
It would be more restrictive, I think.
And you have to think of, I mean, this is a, it's a small business for her, but a lot of times, it's big companies coming in and buying tons of property, and then it actually, we don't have as many housing units even for our residents, so I think that, that's what I was seeing happened over in Orlando.
That's a good, good point.
Yeah, so.
I'll be quiet.
Quick.
Yeah, I just have a quick question about fluoride. Do we, because of the state legislation, is that still in our water, is it coming out?
Well, I sent out an email, May 2nd, the legislative session ends, and the bills are flying through the House and the Senate, that it looks like a foregone conclusion that state's going to preempt and say fluoride cannot be an additive in water. So, you know, we'll probably know by May 2nd, which is next week.
Yeah, we'll know before our next council meeting.
It becomes a new point that, you know, we won't be allowed to use fluoride.
And I just want to make sure that our residents are aware, we might assume everyone knows, but just in case they want to buy fluoride in their toothpaste, like, just so they're ready for that. And my second one, I had a resident ask me to share this information, and I want to respect that. I got offered a job to work for Commissioner Katie Delaney, part-time. She offered me a position before I got my, I won, and when I won, I told her no, because I wanted to make sure I could handle this job. And so I am working for her part-time doing communications, but I just wanted to share that, and if there, there's anything that needs to be disclosed, I will do that. But I sent an email to Richard and to our city manager, just letting them know that as well.
Can I get a motion to extend us another?
I'm done.
Because we've got the city manager's report and the city attorney's, all because of you.
Okay. Move to extend until 11:10.
Second.
Moved and second to extend to 11:10. Questions?
Move to extend till 11:05.
I have one more thing I forgot to say, that's why I said 11:10.
You don't get another turn.
11:03.
Yeah. We can always end earlier.
Okay, 11, yeah, good. The motion is to extend to 11:10, right? Did I get a second?
I don't know.
Second, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes? All right, here we go, all right.
Member Nelson brought this up. Richard, did you say you have three more weeks? Okay, but I, okay, I know it's in May, and I just will, I would like to know if we have an update on how many applications we have, and because we won't get to talk again until well into May, I feel like, I don't know when our next meeting is exactly, but I think it's like May 9th or something.
I can tell you, we have five applications, three with extensive both county and city attorney experience, one extensive experience currently is a city attorney at a smaller city. So I'm hopeful that, you know, May 5th is when the current posting expires, and I think we have three that are suitable for council consideration, and potentially, we can get one or two more to get a good pool of candidates. Getting a lot of hits, but, you know, there's not a lot of city attorneys out there.
Yep, okay. And then just for us, I would just be thinking about, is that, if we only have five, is that good enough? What would you want us to do as a board? Look at their applications, bring on some other, I kind of lean towards bringing in some city attorneys, maybe within the county, to say, hey, would you mind, you know, vetting these for us? That is, that was kind of the recommendation I got from some of my fellow elected officials when I reached out to them about the process. So I just don't want it to catch us by surprise, where Richard's here one day and gone the next, and like, what's, what's going on? So I think it's going to happen sooner than we realize, so.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. I just wanted to say that I had the, I was, I have been asked to speak at a function at the reflection pool in DC on Wednesday, to talk about the erosion of military benefits, both for those active and those retired. The VA in the next year is going to cut 80,000 people from their roles. So I'm going to be talking to that, and I'm also going to be talking about the executive order to take anything pertaining to DEI out of the military. And just to give you a brief example, there was a, a young woman, that's, she's now a retired Air Force Colonel, who was the first Thunderbird pilot, and because she was a woman, her name was taken out of the history books. Jackie Robinson, who was in World War II, his name has been taken out. It's even been threatened to take General Colin Powell out. So I'm talking to those things, to those people that will listen. So there's a rally in Washington DC at 11 o'clock on next Wednesday, which is the 30th. So both my son and I are speaking, between us, we have 50 years military service. So if I don't get shot and get arrested, I'll be back here for our meeting later. Thank you. Will be on me up. Oh, okay, now, city manager's report.
I just have one informational item attached in the agenda packet, is the staff's second quarter list of strategic plan accomplishments. As you know, Thursday, we're having our FY '26 strategic planning session. That sets the tone for next budget year. Normally, then, staff will develop internal performance measures, very extensive, and then that culminates in a quarterly list of strategic plan accomplishments, and in the package is what we did in the second quarter.
Okay, thank you, city attorney.
I don't, I don't have a report. Just as a reminder, next meeting would be my last meeting. At that point, if you want to discuss an interim, I, you know, have that on the agenda. Of course, you know, Chelsea's the current Assistant City Attorney, if you want to put it on the agenda for you to approve that between, for her to act, until you do retain the successor city attorney, I can put that on the agenda.
Okay.
I don't know, if you want, if you want similar city manager, if you want HR involved, as far as any adjustment salary may feel appropriate, or how you want to handle it, that is up to council.
Okay. Anything else to come before council? I'll entertain a motion for dismissal.
So moved.
No second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Bye, aye and bye.